Okay, once again, I'd like to welcome everyone to our council meeting tonight. We're glad that you all came out and we look forward to having a good discussion with everyone. So, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bachman?
Here.
Henney?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. Okay, the first thing we have on our agenda is a special presentation and I'm gonna call to the podium, Ms. Nip from CLPS.
Safety Town, so thanks. Is this working?
Yes.
And this works like this? Alright, so the town I'm coming to talk about is far less complicated than this. So, I'm the TOSA at the CLPS, that's a fancy word for teacher on special assignment. Oh, first of all, let me just thank council and city managers, Zimmerlin and Mayor Stevens for inviting me here. But, so that's a fancy word for teacher on special assignment. I typically teach first grade and two years ago, I was plucked out of the classroom to look for systems that I could put into place in our building that would improve the quality of our students' education. So, I work with Doug Hacker, who's the SRO at the CLPS, and we were kinda joking around last year and said, "Well, what if we brought Safety Town back?" And I'm kind of a pessimist and I was like, "There's no way we can do it, there's just too many barriers." And Doug, being the optimist that he is, is like, "You can do it, you'll figure it out." So, he just kind of dropped the idea in my lap and left me with it. And here I am. So, in the past, I don't know if any of you remember Safety Town from like maybe your children went through, but in the past, Safety Town was done at Inglewood Hills Elementary. It was run and funded by Inglewood Police Department, which kind of led to a limited number of kids being able to participate. It was also delivered during the day over the summertime, so kids who had parents who were working weren't able to participate. So, it took out a lot, like it wasn't a very equitable program. It was a great program like for the kids who could be there, but, and then they charged a fee. So, that it was dependent on another municipality and what their funding was available, it just wasn't a great idea. So, Doug and I talked about what the barriers of Safety Town would be and we wanted to kind of eliminate this. So, we came up with a plan whereby it would be a community-funded project. Our project's been funded by municipalities, it's been funded by small businesses, it's been funded by community groups like Optimist and The Rotary. And I secured a fund from, a grant from the Northmont Education Foundation and then the district received some safety, some safety grant money that they threw into it. So, we've got a truly community-funded project. It's equitable for all students because it's being presented during the school day, so there's no extra money that we have to pay. Our SRO is going to teach it along with another staff member, so there's no extra funding for the district to carry, which is good considering the results of the levy on Tuesday. And there's no financial burden to families since it is part of the school day. So, what Safety Town is going to look like is something like this. You might remember that the buildings were like made of wood, they were clunky, they were kind of ugly, they were hard to put up. Well, I found a company who specializes, if you can imagine, in Safety Town buildings. The buildings themselves are kind of made of like tent material and they are put together with PVC pipe. So, it's very easy to put up, it's very easy to take down, and since storage is at a premium, they're very easy to store. We can put everything into like a Tupperware, rubber-made container and put them on a shelf. So, right now, we've got, actually, we've got seven buildings now. We've got a JD Custard, Inglewood Fund Center, we have a hair salon, and we have three homes. And recently, one of the officers from the City of Inglewood presented us with some money to buy a police department. So, we're pretty excited about that. We're gonna be using vehicles, which are, we're just gonna be using great big tricycles, which were very expensive, by the way. Some people were like, "Well, tricycles shouldn't be very expensive," but they were like 300 bucks. I mean, yeah, for a tricycle, but anyway. So, and then we're gonna be on a realistic street layout. This is not our layout, but this is kind of like what ours is gonna look like. So, there's a company in Canton, Ohio that makes tarps, covers for Safety Town. And so, we're able to like designate green spaces and parking lots and roads and railroad crossings. And those are not our vehicles, those were a lot more expensive. So, it's gonna look something like this. It's gonna be done in the gym in April of May, we're gonna start April of May of next year. It's for all kindergarten students and it will be during their PE time for three or four weeks. We haven't decided how long. So, the floor coverings were really important so we could protect obviously our gym floor. And I included this little quote here about play because while it looks like play, our kids, we've got nine, about 900 kids between the ages of four and seven, so there's a lot of energy there. But play is often talked about as if it were a relief from serious learning. These kids learn by play. This is how we have structured the CLPS. We incorporate a lot of play time for them, so it's just very good for their brain and they're able to learn. So, I feel like I talked really, really quickly, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
It was a wonderful program.
Yep, Officer Hacker will be doing the instruction. It'll be, will cover like stranger danger and traffic laws and how to be a good pedestrian, all those things to help keep our little ones safe.
Did you say it's gonna be a recess in April and May?
Not recess, during their PE time, their gym time, their physical education time. Yeah, they'll be...
And it's inside?
Yeah, yeah, no, and that was the other, that was another barrier, was that being inside was the weather. I mean, being outside, it was the weather.
Yeah, but you can do it inside in February and January and nobody'd say a word, probably.
That's true, too. Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Are you in need of any further donations or anything?
Pardon me?
Are you in need of any further donations or anything?
I would be happy to take any money that you have available.
You shouldn't ask that question.
Yes, yes, right now, we are nearly funded, believe it or not. Those, the coverings for the floor, I about choked when I got the estimate for it, it was $6,000. So, we have that almost funded and then everything was just way more expensive than what I thought. And my hope for this is each child will be walking away with a bicycle helmet. And so, I'm looking to the future to like be funded for the bicycle helmets like one year in advance. But after this initial layout of money, we're gonna be, we won't need to like maintain anything. It's just gonna be the bicycle helmets, so, yeah.
What is the budget for it?
Well, initially, it started out to be $5,000. It's really way off the mark because I thought we were gonna do like wooden buildings. So, we're currently at 16,000, which, like for me, that's a lot of money. But when we're looking at investing in our little ones, and this is not a program that's gonna go away. This program, we're gonna start it next year and it's gonna be part of the curriculum every year after, without any other layout financially, so, yes ma'am.
So, that's probably an initial, what it's gonna take to get it going?
The 16,000?
It won't cost that much?
It's not gonna cost that after that, it's gonna cost the number of kindergarteners we have times however much a bicycle helmet costs. Yeah, so, if you have any questions, you can contact me at the CLPS. My email is just, if you've got the agenda, it's just lnip@northmontschools.net and I'd be happy to answer any other questions. Okay, awesome.
So, I wanna say thank you for your leadership and also thank you to Northmont Schools for doing this. This, again, it's an important thing. We get these kids when they're young and get them thinking about safety and getting them to know the rules of the road and such and hopefully it'll be something that they, that stays with them. So, on behalf of our council and our staff and our city, I wanna present this check to you. It's for $500, you know, to use as you see fit for this, this project.
Awesome, thank you.
Appreciate you, yes.
Thank you, appreciate you too, Mike. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. You're welcome to stay. Okay, thanks again, Ms. Nip, for that great presentation. Okay, so, the next thing on our, on our agenda is a public hearing. So, will you read the title of that?
It's basically, basically, the Planning Commission Case 2303 Salem Springs Residential Subdivision. It's the rezoning and preliminary development plan for the Salem Springs Development.
Okay, so, I need everyone, in order to be able to speak here, I have to have you sworn in. It's a pretty short, sweet little thing, but if you're, if you think you might, if you know you're going to speak or you think you might want to speak, if I could have you all, have those folks stand and raise your right hands. It's really painless, including the staff. I solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. So, help me God. Alright, thank you. You could, you could've said that yourself, right? Okay, again, thanks everyone for coming. I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Dorman, who's our city planner. Seth?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, good evening, council members. I'd like to begin with an introduction to our application. Application PC 2303 was received on March 6, 2023, or a rezoning and a preliminary development plan for a new single-family subdivision to be called Salem Springs. The applicant is Arbor Homes. The property owner is the Dorothy A. Hartman Trust and Mr. Orville Hartman signed the application affidavit stating that he is aware of and consents to the application. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this application on March 27th of this year, after which they passed a motion to recommend that city council approve the request with a couple of conditions, including the increase of the minimum width, lot width from 52 feet to 60 feet as a result of some testimony and comments received from the public on concerns over density, thus reducing the number of lots from 162 to 155. Public notice for this hearing was printed in the Eaton Register Herald on April 19th, 2023 and letters to the property owners within 300 feet of the site were postmarked and mailed on April 20th, 2023. The proposed subdivision is located along two road frontages, including Phillipsburg Union Road to the north and Haber Road to the west. The subject property is parcel number M60030060009 with an area of 42.99 acres. Current zoning of the parcel is RCD 2, Rural Conservation District 2, and the proposed zoning is PDD, Planned Development District. Staff reviewed and provided to each council member the following documents: an application, preliminary development plan, say plan, and a geotechnical exploration report. This image shows the surrounding area. The subject property is highlighted and zoned RCD 2. You can see various zonings around, to the south RSD, to the west RSD, and some RCD. To the east is a subdivision in the City of Union and to the north, some more RCD properties. This is just zoomed in a little bit on the, on the subject parcel, again, 42.99 acres. Wanted to talk a little bit about the rezoning. The current zoning on the property is Rural Conservation District 2, RCD 2, which permits or conditionally permits several agricultural-related uses, some residential uses, and limited types of uses in the following categories: communications utilities, institutional, which is civic, religious, parks and recreation, commercial and industrial. The proposed zoning on the property is Planned Development District for a proposed single-family residential subdivision with 155 lots and including various public improvements and community amenities. Talking a little bit about, about the preliminary development plan before us tonight, again, it is proposed a single-family residential subdivision proposing 155 lots with an overall density of 3.72 lots per acre. Access to the development would come from two access points, one on Phillipsburg Union Road and the other on Haber Road. New public roads are proposed to serve the proposed lots and are proposed to be called Salem Springs Drive, Randolph Drive, Fountainhead Drive and Haynes Drive. The new public roads would be built to city standards and dedicated to the City of Clayton after completion and acceptance by the city and will be required to have five-foot wide sidewalks on both sides of the street. There would be a path leading from Haynes Drive to the neighborhood park. Street lights matching the city standard poles and fixtures will be installed for added safety and security for the residents of Salem Springs. Utilities are available at or near the site and so the proposed development would be able to tie into existing public infrastructure. Some of the community amenities proposed are a 10-foot wide multi-use path along the length of the Haber Road frontage, five-foot wide sidewalk along the Phillipsburg Union frontage to tie into the existing sidewalk in front of Iron Gate Estates, a half-acre neighborhood park to be located east of Haynes Drive. There would be proposed three retention ponds on the east side of the proposed subdivision. The middle pond will have a fountain and will serve as a focal point for the community. While the other ponds would have aerators to circulate the pond water, this helps to prevent algae growth and to discourage mosquito habitation. Preliminary plan shows a potential wetland area in the southeast corner of the property. The applicant's engineering team will have to make a determination in conjunction with the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers. So, at this time, it's unknown what, if any, impact that would have on the proposed layout. Arbor Homes' proposing standard was to be 52 by 110. Those are now 60 by 110 lots. Goes up from 0.13 to 0.15 acres. Would have the following minimum building setbacks: a 25 front yard, five side yard and 25 rear yard. That last line was related to the, the initial plan, which had smaller lots, so all lots will have, again, at least a minimum 60-foot wide lot. So, we look into our toolbox as a, as a development staff and see how those guide us. So, Plan Clayton's guidance, Plan Clayton envisions future land use on this property to be agricultural. However, this property is surrounded by single-family residential uses and zoning to the east, west and south. It's staff's opinion that a planned development rezoning for single-family residential would not be out of character for this area. I also took a, kind of a look back into the past just for some guidance and just as a reference point for, for staff, but also for city council. Looking at the city's 1999 land use plan and also Randolph Township's comprehensive plan from 1990, we see that this property in both documents was envisioned for single-family development, either low density or low to medium density depending on the document that, that you look at. So, the next thing that we look at is the, the planning and zoning code for guidance. So, the two sections that are primarily involved in this application are Section 11121, which gets into our planned development districts and the requirements for planned development submittal, and then Section 114110, which is a rezoning and code amendment. So, this section addresses the application, submitted requirements for rezoning. The application in, in submittal clearly describes the proposed development and meets the spirit and intent of the submittal requirements. So, this is staff recommendation, but really I wanted to talk about the Planning Commission's action. So, after the public hearing, they did make the recommendation to city council to approve the rezoning in the preliminary development plan with a couple of conditions. One is that, that the lot widths be increased from 52 to 60 feet and then that the applicant, for the purposes of submitting for the final development plan, that they addressed the issues that were outlined in the staff review letter dated March 24th, 2023 and sent to the applicant on that date. So, with that, and I think this might be the older plan, I will leave that up just for the discussion, but be happy to answer any questions that, that you might have.
Any questions from the council? Any comments?
Yeah, I...
Question, Seth?
Yes.
We've had recently, this is the fourth plat we've had through here, and the first three, the Plan Clayton document was the gospel. It was the Bible and we couldn't go away from it because it said we had to do that. Now, this one, we're throwing the Plan Clayton out and rezoning it. I, I don't understand what the difference is, number one, and number two, which I've said many times before, is that when we started the City of Clayton, the merger committee, one of the promises we made was that north of I-40 will remain a rural area. And by my geography and my driving around, this is north of I-40, or not Interstate 40, but Route 40. And I don't know why we're going against the Clayton plan or Plan Clayton document and everything else to try and get this done. Because if you start one in the middle of that, all those farms around it are gonna go the same way, just like happened down the street here. And the third... The, the third thing I have is we've had three lot, or three developments where we've had less than 60-foot lots. And we have another half a dozen in the city which have 100-foot lots. And I don't understand, because we did it twice, we don't have to do it again with the 60-foot lots. We can, this is 42 acres and they can make a bigger lot and possibly even bigger houses at that point. And less traffic also.
So, Mr. Gorman, and Seth, you can correct me if I'm wrong. First, the 60-foot lots that are being required now that Planning Commission required is standard for RSD zoning. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
Yes, and then...
It's a minimum problem.
Yes, it's...
Okay, but it's not the standard.
No, it is the standard for RSD. That is, 60-foot wide lots is what is required.
The minimum width, correct.
So, the, just touching on Plan Clayton, city council has already established that Plan Clayton isn't a firm document. And we saw that at the National and Haber discussion, when city council decided that they didn't wanna put the Redwood project there, which is absolutely fine and that's council's prerogative. But to say that city council, that you follow it as the gospel, isn't necessarily true.
Well, it's been called gospel on the other three plats that we've done. I mean, not the one on Haber and 40, but it's been, and I've said then that it was north of 42, if you recall. And I still, and being the only one that was on the merger commission that's sitting here today, and remember this, and that was one of the promises that we firmly believed that got the deal passed so that we could become a city with the Village of Clayton.
Mr. Gorman, I would just say that we've never used the word gospel. It is a guide, it is a vision for our development and that, that is correct. But, but it, you know, it isn't a document that you guys have not gone, in a decision that you've made been different from, from Plan Clayton. There is some industrial property that was rezoned that, that does not show that way in, in Plan Clayton and as Ms. Zimmerlin said about a National Haber, so...
Right, and also, when the, I don't know the name of the outfit that did Plan Clayton, I don't remember the name, but there was a lot of public hearings and I attended, was able to attend a number of those. And one of the things that a lot of people mentioned that they liked best about the possibility of a City of Clayton was that the rural area that they could go to, take their kids up and see animals, domestic animals, as well as some wild animals, depending on where you're going, and that was one of the pluses of the city.
Absolutely.
And that's mentioned many times in Plan Clayton.
That, that's right, and you're still gonna have...
But now, we're trying to develop everything north of 40.
You're still gonna have hundreds and hundreds of rural acres left in the city. If you look back at our past documents as Randolph Township and as the City of Clayton, it did show that property as, as envisioned for single-family. And if you look at the current land use and zoning adjacent to that property, it's RSD, Residential Single Unit District.
And if you remember, Seth, you weren't here at that time, but the reason that there is a City of Clayton is because of the annexation methods of the City of Union and the City of Inglewood, taking all the rural area which the City of Clayton, when we became a city, would stop. And, and now, we're, we're not stopping anymore. We're going, we got one on, on 40 and Haber and now we're going two miles back and putting another one there.
Looking at the history, my understanding is that the neighboring cities took developable land and left streets for Randolph Township to maintain, which they could not afford and so...
Have you ever heard anybody say that you can't tell where Clayton is because it's all chopped up? There's a reason for that, Seth, and it's not that they left the roads to the county or the township, I mean. But that was one of the problems, you're correct.
And what we're trying to do with, with development, but also with road projects, is to create a brand for the city so that it's very clear when you're in Clayton, that you're in Clayton.
Any other comments or questions from council for Seth?
Seth, I don't know whether you're the person I need to ask this question of, but I received some letters and one of the, and there seemed to be a consistent theme among some of the letters I received about concerns over water, either flooding or what would happen to those who have well water in the area with this project. Are you able to address those concerns?
What, what I can address is, is at this stage, you guys are considering, council's considering a rezoning to a planned development district for residential development. You have a preliminary development plan in front of you, which is a conceptual plan. So, so before you tonight is the charge to, to say, do you, does it make sense to rezone this to residential? And generally, do, do we like the idea of, of this development at that location? When we get to the final development plan, if we get to the final development plan, engineering studies are going to be done. There'll be a hydrology study to look at stormwater, how that's handled, you know, what, what kind of volume is needed in the, in the retention ponds. We'll also be looking at a traffic study. And so, the applicant is, is obligated to mitigate their impacts with this development and that's what those studies will, will determine. So, so I can, I can tell you that, that at this point.
So, if, and I think I completely understand what you're saying, but those studies come at a later time. If they find that well water would be impacted or traffic studies are, would have a negative impact, then we do not have to okay this project at that time.
You will get, there will be public hearings on the final development plan, both with Planning Commission to recommend, make a recommendation to city council and then it will come to city council, so you will have a chance to decide if the plan before you is something that you are in agreement with and would like to see move forward.
I have a question also concerning the water issue. So, I'm assuming that if this development goes through, that it would have like a storm water control? I understand it has the, the retention ponds, but will there be additional storm water controls?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it is a great question. And so, with public streets and with what would be proposed along Haber in terms of a multi-use path, the storm water is going to be collected in pipes and it's going to be taken to the retention ponds. Now, the studies will determine how much volume is needed in those ponds. But the water is taken to those ponds and it's gonna be collected, not just this site, but off-site. It's going to sit in the ponds for a certain amount of time. I'm, I'm not an engineer, but I know enough to know that the, the water sits in these ponds. There is an orifice, which is a, a type of plate that, that slows the release of the water back into the storm water system. The idea being that at a minimum, the applicant, the development has to mitigate for their impact and the storm water situation will be no worse than it is today. It has to be designed to pre-development condition or better, and typically, it's better.
Just, just so I'm clear, on the hydrology study that's going to be done, would it, would we be able to determine from that study whether those areas around this development, whether their wells would be impacted by the development?
No, I don't think it would get into that. It's going to get into what is the amount of water that this site is going to take, and what are the depths of the ponds and the volume that's required in those ponds.
Is there a study that we would be able to look at to determine whether, and I'm, to directly tell you what I'm talking about, I got a letter regarding bedrock and how the bedrock might have to be, for lack of a better term, some of it damaged in order to put in water in the sewer from Union. And the concern is whether that's going to impact their well water. Because I mean, we don't want to do damage to neighboring wells or sewer systems. So how do we determine that?
And we do have a, I'm trying to think of it, the exploration report, the geotechnical exploration report, and so that's looking at, they go on site and they do bores, so they're looking at how much soil is there, where do we meet bedrock? So that gets into those types of issues. I think it's important to note that if during construction, something should spoil the wells, that would be then a civil matter between the developer and the property owners.
It would. The, but if I understand what you're telling me, that geotechnical study is going to be able to give us an idea as to the risk of impact to the neighboring areas?
From the standpoint of depths of where the bedrock is, that will help us to determine, or at least gain some sense of whether or not, you know, you would have to do blasting to put in utilities, because the utilities have to be put in at a certain depth. If the bedrock's close to the soil, that may be a possibility.
If we do that study, could we be sensitive to the question of damage to the neighboring areas on their water and sewer?
What I can tell you is our city engineer will be reviewing all of the studies that are provided to us, but I would ask the applicant to further address your question, Mr. Liberman.
So I have a couple. When I look at the Plan Clayton, it says in 1999, that area was labeled "single-family low density." Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So what was the difference between low density versus what you want to change it to now?
It is not currently codified in today's planning and zoning code, but as of prior to July 2021, it was in our code. We had residential density definitions for low, medium, and high. Low was no more than five dwelling units per gross acre. Medium is no more than eight dwelling units per gross acre. And then high is anything over eight dwelling units per gross acre. And again, those definitions aren't currently codified in our planning and zoning code. They were in the previous code.
Okay, thank you. And then looking at Plan Clayton in that area, it calls for parks. I mean, I know that you said that there was the wetland area. Where in this development do they plan to put any type of green space?
As with, you know, as with any development that comes before us, they do look at ponds as open space in terms of their calculation. There is a neighborhood park here. There is the potential wetland that is shown as undeveloped without lots. So at this time, those are the open spaces that are shown on the conceptual preliminary development plan.
Whereas Hunter's Path had three, like, green spaces throughout that property?
They counted their ponds as well. I think they had, I want to say around three to five ponds. They did have centralized in the neighborhood. They had about an acre that they've set aside for a neighborhood park.
Okay. And why didn't Arbor come here tonight to present? I know with Hunter's Path and Northwood Estates and Wanger Estates and the new apartments on Hoak Road, the developer has come. Why are they not here tonight?
So Arbor is here tonight. I always present first, and then they come up and they're given an opportunity to add to what I've said and answer any questions that you as council members have. So they are here tonight.
Okay. I am done for questions then with staff until Arbor presents.
Seth, I have one more question, and maybe this is probably a question for Arbor, but, you know, I know they've had issues in Irongate. I know some folks that live over there, and like their basements flood a lot, and like all basements, you know, are likely to flood at some point. But they, I think they've had their troubles over there. So, or do you know if they're planning on building basements in these houses?
I will let Arbor speak specifically to that, but what we've been told is that they are not intending to do basements, but they would, if that's something that the buyer would like to add on, they would do that for the buyer. But they are not intending to do basements. They would be slab homes.
Any other questions or comments for Seth?
Seth, at one point, I was looking through the information. Were you citing some information referring to the special development zone that's around National and Haber as part of the descriptions?
The, are you referring to the Clayton Improvement District?
Yeah, I was trying to find some information as far as what's development requirements are for a planned development area.
Yeah, so, I mean, planned development area is its own chapter, and I do refer to that in the, in the staff report that you have. This particular property is outside of the Clayton Improvement District, but the code chapter on planned development districts does apply, and I've addressed that in the second one.
That section was within the, was within the section dealing with planned development. And that being the only part of this, essentially having something that describes planned developments. The, that planned development area has a lesser density for housing residential plat layout than what the planned development is being proposed. Because I believe what I read was 2.4 dwellings per acre.
Are you talking about in the planned district code, or are you talking about in the Clayton Improvement Districts?
Yes.
Well, the thing that's important for council to remember is when you are considering a planned development district, the plan that you approve, if you approve the plan, is what is built, and in effect, it creates the zoning standards for that particular parcel. So any, a plan that you approve, a final development plan that you approve, that's what can be built on that property.
Yeah, I was looking at the section here of 111.22 CID area provisions for special area one, and I'm just only mentioning this because I thought it was mentioned as far as some descriptions that you had included. I mean, if it's not, if it's not applicable, I'll shut up.
Can you just tell me what page you're looking at, and then what?
Page 99.
Page 99 in the staff report?
No, 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 no. This is, I thought you were talking about the zoning.
Oh, the planning and zoning code? What was the section that you're referring to again? I'm sorry. That is the Clayton Improvement District. That does not apply to this project.
Doesn't apply, then it's, would not apply to the description of anything here.
Correct.
But I guess what I'm asking from the standpoint of, if that was good enough essentially for that area, why can't we use some of those descriptions for this area?
Well, again, that chapter guides development in the Clayton Improvement District, but you have to remember there too, anything over five acres is required to be a planned development district. And once again, whatever plan you approve in a planned development district supersedes the standards in the zoning code specifically.
Yeah, I'm just looking, what I'm getting at here is that when you look at what's on one side of Haber, and what this lot is proposing to have, and then, while we don't have anything to do with Union, when you look at the size lots that Union has, and this is going back and looking at what the county auditor site lists those lot sizes as being, you know, those lots are 20 feet narrower and 10 feet shorter than the lots that are in Union just on the side of a tree line. And if we're trying to transition from one density area to another, suddenly we're a lot smaller. And I just, we don't control Union as far as what they've done, but it would be nice if we have something that would be comparable to what is in Union as far as, if it's going to be developed, I mean, something that's comparable to that.
Right.
In terms of the density of the housing and the placement of the homes in that area.
Well, I would say that this is council's moment. If you're concerned about density, if you're concerned about lot widths, when you're approving a zoning, that that's where to request those changes.
So then Greg, what would you say, do you have in front of you what Irongates are?
I was just, I had just gone to the auditor's website and was looking at just different lot areas. When you looked at the auditor's site, when you start looking at lots, and what they had listed those sites to be, and essentially they end up coming out to around 9,000 square feet.
Yeah, I looked at it too, and I think what you averaged there is a quarter acre. What's aver, the minimum lot size in this proposed development would be 0.15, so it's a tenth of an acre less than what's in Irongate.
Yeah, most of the lots were around 0.22 acres versus what proposed here as being 0.15.
Hunter's Path was a minimum 52, 52-foot wide lots.
That's probably comparable to what's back there in that division already?
Yeah, like I said, I was just looking at what was already out in that area, and how a housing-planted area and how, what their density was, and if we're putting or asking something to go in, that we look at something that's of comparable density. And while other areas were of, you know, the lot size of 52 by 110 or whatever they were, you know, this is not in those same locations. This is, this is a more remote site versus others, and it's out open space. Essentially, we're taking an open space and filling it in between a housing plant and, you know, five-acre homes. And you go from, you know, five-acre home to a tenth of an acre home to a quarter acre home, and like, where are you gonna, where would you locate at? You know, for me, I'd go to five-acre home, but I mean, that's not my choice at this particular moment, but I'm just saying this from the density aspect. The 0.15 acre site locations, while it might be the average or what's the standard, doesn't mean that we have to go with a minimum standard. And at this point, I have some strong opposition to a 0.15 acre lot.
And the applicant will be up here soon, and I think those are great comments for the applicant, of course, who's just heard what you've said, but...
And like I said, I'm not looking at trying to kill a project, but I'm also, you know, we have to be conscious of terms of what the city actually needs and what the people that actually have to look at this are going to be seeing every day. I mean, this is their neighborhood, and we have to be conscious in terms of what is appealing to the neighbors that are going to be living there. And, I mean, there's a line that you, for me, essentially, that I have to deal with. And I've been dwelling over this for a while in terms of how, where do I stand on this? And I don't want to see it die, but I also don't want to see something just basically get rammed in. And so I want people to be comfortable with what's happening. And whether it goes in or it doesn't go in, I want people to know that there was some good conscious thought that was put into this before anything happens. And I do appreciate the work and effort that everyone's done. I mean, don't, don't take me short on this. I mean, it's not an easy task for anybody.
Absolutely, and I appreciate your thoughts and all of your thoughts tonight, council members. But I think for the applicant's sake, it would be very helpful to them if you're interested in potentially approving the rezoning. What is it, the density or the lot size that you'd like to see? Because they're not able to make a decision on whether to move forward unless they know what, you know, what you're thinking in terms of lot sizes.
You know, having good conversation and discord in terms of what's going on, I think is important for everybody. And everybody has been very civil up to this point, and that's the one thing I want to stress to everybody, you know, when you're commenting, please be civil in your discussions, because it's the only way we get things accomplished, one way or another. And to have discourse, adversarial discourse is not helpful. It drags things out unnecessarily. And, you know, I want to hear what the developer has to say in terms of what-ifs, because even as far as 155 lots, I mean, I'm taking up more time here than I intended to. 155 lots, we look at three retention basins, and they haven't done engineering studies to make a determination as to whether or not those basins are sufficient size to take on the quantity of water that would essentially be running towards them essentially from the lots on the other side of the road, because that water has to go someplace, plus the lot, the water that hits the 42 acres that this takes into place, and the people downstream, essentially the people of Irongate. You know, we can't flood their homes just because we want to put a plat in. And I don't think the city of Union would be very appreciative of that. You know, is Union's infrastructure going to be able to sufficiently take in, you know, the water flow? So the catch basins have to be a sufficient size to be able to accomplish all that. So even the number of homes essentially being proposed at this point in time may not be possible based on the retention basins that might be constructed, and that's outside of the realm of this discussion today, because that's for final engineering studies.
I think what you're trying to decide is what is the density that you would permit moving forward, then they can go into the very expensive engineering studies to determine those pond sizes. And will that change the layout? Maybe, maybe not. But what you all have to determine this evening is, what, if this is something that you could see moving forward, what is that density, what is that lot size that makes sense for this particular property?
We have to have a starting point.
That's right.
I'd like to kind of go back to what, something that Seth asked though, because again, you gotta bear with me, I'm trying to get a clear perspective here also. So if the one, if the 0.15 is, if that creates a density that you're not comfortable with, like what, what is the line? And I think that would help the developer and help, help everyone decide what, what is it that, I guess I'm saying, what is it that you have a problem with? I get it, you don't like the 1.5. What would you, what would you like?
I don't know that you can actually put a number on this, because you don't know what the potential layout would have to be in order to accomplish those points. And you'd be kind of hard-pressed to ask the developers, to ask them, what's your minimum number you have to have to make this a profitable adventure? Because as soon as you say that, that's what's going to get locked in. And, you know, that'll be essentially the magic number, essentially you can't build any more than this. And I don't, you know, I don't know that you can do that, but coming back with whatever site design layout might be based on, you know, what density for the lots you want, prefer to have, and have another draft come back with that layout, you know, that's probably where you're at, because that's essentially where it left from Planning Commission.
Might I suggest that your Planning Commission recommended 60-foot wide lots, so really the number to change would be depth. You've got a minimum 60 by 110. Do you go up to, you know, 60 by 120s like Hunter's Path, or, you know, average of 60 by 125s? 125 was the depth that you all approved in the preliminary development plan for Northwood Estates at National and Haber. So those are a couple recent examples of lot sizes that you approved. Now with Hunter's Path and Northwood Estates, you all did approve 52-foot wide lots.
But that's like Mr. Merkel was saying, that mirrors the neighborhood. Hunter's Path probably mirrors, what's the name of your neighborhood?
Bayberry Trail.
Bayberry Trail. It probably mirrors Bayberry Trail, which this would, I mean, Mr. Merkel was trying to say this should probably mirror what's out there in regards to the residential, which is about a quarter of an acre.
Like I said, the lots that were shown in Union were at 80 feet.
Yes, in the 80-foot wide range, they're quarter acre lots. That's correct. The city of Clayton properties that are due west and due south of this property are zoned RSD, and in RSD, you could develop a lot that's a minimum width of... And in RSD, you could develop a lot that's a minimum width of 60 feet.
But we're not developing those. I mean, I, I, I'm not trying to be sarcastic, I'm just saying, you know, we're.
No.
The lot that we're looking at.
Part of the discussion, I understand.
Because if something were to happen, you know, south or north of this, we could have the same discussion and end up with, you know, at the same point.
Yeah.
Anything else for me?
Anything else for Mr. Dorman from the council?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. I guess, I mean, do you, would you want council to now input, or do you want residents or Arbor to talk in regards to what we think lot sizes should be?
I think I need, we need to hear everyone's, else's input, yeah.
Might, might I suggest that you give the applicant a chance to speak first?
Okay. Thank you, sir. And if Arbor's here, if you could come up to the podium? If you would just state your name and address for the record, and we'll ask everyone to state your name and address for the record as you come up, so.
Okay. My name is Paul Metzger. I'm the director of land acquisition for Arbor. Our business address is 1950 Center Point Drive in Westchester. So I want to thank council and the mayor for letting us present tonight, and thanks Seth for doing a good job presenting what was out there so far. Want to talk about why we're in Clayton and why we want to be here. So, you know, Clayton is a good city, good city to be in. We are working down at the Hunter's Path right now. We did not develop that site, we're just getting that started as far as home building activities, but think that's going to be a good site. We believe this site is, as well, a good site with a lot of good attributes. You know, you have a good school system, you have good tax rates compared to Union and other neighboring cities. You've got convenience to shopping, you've got good local park systems, you have easy access to highways, you're, you're close to job centers, and you're close to Dayton overall for, you know, that, that vanity, so to speak. Arbor is a new builder to the region. We are a 29-year-old business that started in Indianapolis. We built about 1,700 homes last year in total. Here in the, the Dayton region, I think we closed about 20 last year, and we're set to close about 70 this year, mostly in Union, Beaver Creek, you know, we're, we're kind of filling, filling around the area. And then Clayton's a big part of our success moving forward. And again, we just think this site is, is something that's an exceptional site. This is actually an early site that we identified two years ago, when we were first looking, and just the DDC one kind of got a head start, able to get things moving quicker. So that's why we're there first. But we see some differences in this site from the site down on Westbrook, you know, a little different area, and just a little different dynamic of what all we're going to be looking for in the customers. But very similar homes, really the same homes are going to be built. There was a question about whether we'd be building basements, and Seth somewhat answered that. We build slab-on-grade homes with an option for basements. If a customer wants a basement, we sell them a basement. Our history of our company is only about 10% of our homes are basements. Dayton looks like it's actually a little lower than that right now compared to what we've done in Indianapolis and Louisville and other places we've built, but still waiting to see that and how that goes. There seemed to be a little bit of confusion, or at least a comment you made about some issues, you said that they had in, in Iron Gate. We have built two houses in Iron Gate that are slab-on-grade homes only. We, we haven't been involved in any of the other homes there. There was another company recently that was building, I think, five or six homes, but ours are two homes only. They're a little farther into the center of the site. But those are both going to close here, actually one next week and one in about a month. It's a finished home. We, really, one of the things that we believe and, and really the company was founded upon is really helping people obtain houses and, and get homeownership. We are really big on that. Our homes typically are going to range about 250 to about $400,000. You know, that's not, you know, quote unquote a starter home, it's, it's really a next level. As a comparison, we ran some numbers with our salespeople last night. If somebody puts that down 5% on a $300,000 house, they're going to have about a $2,600 a month mortgage. So these aren't, you know, there's other comments made at the planning commission about, you know, the level of customers that we're going to bring in. These are going to be good working families, people are making money. We have a lot of low, or I should say, entry, uh, young, young professionals, young couples that are coming in. We have a lot of people who are actually downsizing and either doing high cash down payments or all cash homes. So those are typically the type of customers that we're seeing. We really celebrate our customers. I compare to, we had a customer over in Concord, or I'm sorry, area, Concord Meadows and Union, that we kind of celebrate them, and when they sign their contracts, they get pictures and everything. It was a young couple who were going to get married in January, and they said, we want to be able to come off our honeymoon and move into our house. That's the type of people that we're going to bring into the community. Your police officers, your firemen, your teachers, you know, all those type of people, you know, again, you have to make, make some good money to, to be in here and, and that type of stuff. Quality home builder, we've been doing this for 29 years, like I said. We're building up the road, and we have, you know, very good reviews, clean communities, well-built, and we're really proud of what we do there. So I was also asked, and unfortunately, Mr. Hartman's just not available to come tonight, an elderly gentleman, but you know, why are they selling? They're selling it because this is property they've owned for generations. They see this as an opportunity to finally pass some money on to their children and grandchildren, is really the intent of, that's Dean, Orville Dean Hartman and his brother, who were actually the, the holders of the trust. It was their mother's property, that's who Dorothy Hartman is, she's long deceased. They have owned hundreds and hundreds of acres, my understanding, in this area and, and farther out to the west, and this is just an isolated piece of property. We got, it's been on the market since 2017. We put it under contract in 2021. I've been working through this process. There's been some questions and about engineering and things like that. And that's the next step after we hopefully can get some approval here, because it's hundreds of thousands of dollars would have to be spent to do those things. Things like, there was comments about rock. We have done some, some soil borings, I think was a part of the package to you all. Ballsball excavation, local contractors looked at that. He doesn't think we're going to be blasting and things like that. He can't guarantee it, but he doesn't think it. He did the Iron Gate subdivision, he's done all kinds of subdivisions around here. Are we going to have to rip some rock and chip some rock? Probably in the sewers and things like that, but we don't expect to be doing blasting and things like that. If it came to that, there's rules that you have to follow for blasting. I've been involved in that in, in other areas down in Kentucky. There's surveys you have to do ahead of time to make sure the condition of existing properties and what you do. But again, if it gets to that, we'll deal with it. We don't really think it's going to get to that based off of, you know, local knowledge. If, you know, Ballsball knows probably as much about these areas as anybody from a contractor standpoint. There was some comments on stormwater and some pictures that were sent out. The issues on the properties to the west, there's really not a whole lot we're going to do about that. Those are issues on those properties. Where crosses the road and gets onto our property, there's, I think, four current pipe systems now that go through the, under the road. We have to pick that water up, and we have to manage it, get it piped through the site, and get it discharged, all through lots of rules that are out there. The city engineering, I think it's Klineger will, will review that on behalf of the city. There's state EPA rules, everything else that we have to follow that will do that. As an example, though, our three ponds are larger in general area than the pond currently on Iron Gate. So Iron Gate was developed quite a while ago, and, and the standards have changed. I believe the state is on permit number eight from when they started in their early 90s. So those rules and regulations have all changed. So we're confident that we will address those. And, you know, we, we, as Seth said, things are going to get better. They're not going to get worse, they're going to get better of, of all that stormwater process. But again, we will bring that in. Now, if for some reason, this is very schematic, these three ponds need to be larger, we might come back to you in, in the final development plan and say, geez, we lost six more lots because we had to make the pond bigger. But that's just something we'd rather deal with when we come back with that study and to see. Because right now, you know, we, we've spent $10,000 or $15,000 on things that we've done to date, which is appropriate at this level. But again, that next level, that's when we will spend, spend significant money and come back with sound, strong drawings and, and engineering plans that will be able to be vetted properly. Again, I talked generally about our, our property values, because there's some concerns about that. I looked at, I think, six properties on Haber Road to the west that have been sold in the past six or seven years. And they've averaged 213 to 289 in that range. Our home values at Iron Gate that we, we are going to sell here in a few weeks, 312 and 365, up at Union Spring, just up the road, we're starting at 269. Where our very, our average sale price is 320. Concord Meadows, which is back in the back, behind there, we actually start at 231, but our average is 310. And Hunter's Path, we're really just starting there, so it's probably not as good of a comparison. But again, we're starting at that 231. But that 231 is a 1,200 square foot house. We build homes from 1,200 square foot all the way to 3,200 square foot. That 1,200 square foot is hardly sold in Ohio. I think we've sold four since we've been here. And just, it's, it's just, it's kind of a lost leader, for lack of a better term. For our people to do it, it's a great little house, it's 1,200 square foot, three-bedroom house, two bath. But most people are buying up. Our customers tend to spend $30,000 to $35,000 in options besides the base price of the house. And then certain lots, you know, we wind up doing some premiums if they're up against the pond and things like that. So that's how those numbers go up. But again, we're really proud of what we do. We, we think we build a great house. We get a lot of people in really an obtainable level house. You know, they don't have to spend $500,000 or $600,000. They can get our house, you know, again, generally $250,000 to $400,000 is what we're going to see in that range. So it's really, Ed, I, again, I think Seth did a great job explaining everything. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and, you know, happy to hopefully be able to get this thing through and, and build another great community in Clayton.
Any questions from council?
To clarify your comment on the stormwater as far as the properties to the west, so what, I think what you're, it sounded a little odd the way you worded it. What you're essentially saying is, you know, you can't help them on essentially the stormwater that is on their property that comes from their property.
One of the pictures showed somebody sitting in a little canoe.
Right.
Because it's got water this deep. Those are issues that are involved with those properties and just their lack of stormwater management.
Right.
In today's day and age, how developments have to be designed, both from city standards and through, all the way through the Ohio EPA, we have to deal with the things like that that are on our property. We have to transport all that water. I talked to the city manager of, of, of Union as well, because of those pictures I saw of Iron Gate, and his estimation of what those issues are. He's like, it's a bunch of uncontrolled water coming from the west across your property, nothing's slowing it down. Your development will help that. You know, he made statements like that to me. He, you know, he's going to be interested in probably, you know, he'll, he'll, because of the, the public storm or sanitary and water, they're going to wind up seeing our plans anyway, because it comes through their system. But he's going to take an interest in what those stormwater calculations look like as well. So we're not contributing to that problem. But again, we're going to do whatever is necessary, whether the traffic study addresses something. Those are all things that we're either going to have to deal with and accept, or we say, hey, we can't do this project. But again, those are all things that have to happen over time once we get the zoning approval.
Yeah, just kind of wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
I have a question. So your minimum build is, from what square footage to what square footage?
1,200 square feet to 3,200 square feet.
And your building materials, is it, have a mix?
Yeah, I mean, our, our standard, you know, we do some level of brick typically on all houses. Again, some that comes off owner selections on the front elevations, the rear and sides are vinyl. Really just what, if you go up to Union Spring, it's, it's what you see there. Of our, actually, I think we're up to 14. We just brought in some new, new floor plans. We offer 14-style for homes, some with four or five elevations, some of them with seven or eight. So 60, 70 elevations that can be mixed in there. If you drive through our two communities right down the road, you'll see no two houses look really alike. I mean, yeah, I mean, they're newer homes in a new subdivision, but you can't say that's the same house. Three doors down, there's another house that's exactly the same, the same color, the same this, the same that. We really do a good job of mixing that up by our own internal requirements that we hold to that. You know, if a blue house is, if a person builds a blue siding house, the next door neighbor, when they come in and want to make a selection, they can't build a blue siding house. They have to pick another color, things like that. So we really mix that up. So, you know, we, I don't want to use other builders by name, but we don't want to look like some of the other, you know, builders. We are a production builder. Part of it is our value, what we bring to the table. But, you know, I, I've been doing this for 33 years, and I don't know that when I started, I would think a $250,000, you know, house, a quarter million dollar house would be, you know, the, the early, you know, new, new homes. Again, but that's a lot of what our customers are going to be, first time in a new home. You know, generally move from an older home or move from an apartment and things like that. And that, you know, we are, we're growing still, you know, a lot of builders talk about they've slowed down 20% or 25%, which we've done in Indianapolis. In this market, being new, we're growth. So we're still growing. Are we growing as quick as we want? No, we'd like to go a little bit better at that. But again, we're here to stay. We're here to build good quality homes, and, and really we'll stand behind our reputation on that.
And a general question in terms of, if this all goes through and you get final approval, what would be the estimated time period in which you would start?
I don't think we would start development until next year, just based, I mean, it'll take that time to get plans approved and everything else. So that would be, you know, best case scenario. And then, you know, we would like to hope that this would be, you know, 30 to 40 homes per year as a, as a, as a completion. We would not build the subdivision all at one time. We would build it in phases, still to be determined. We had just, we had to look at those engineering plans and figure out, you know, stormwater detention has a lot to do that. But just the layout of the, you know, other utilities, and we'll draw lines. And again, not exact, but, you know, I would guess something on the order of 40 to 50 lots at a time will be developed.
Yeah, I'm just not wanting something that was comparable to what happened with North Clayton suddenly developing on Haber Road.
I'm sorry.
That which happened on, at North Clayton, you know, that started back 2008, and now we're still trying to get.
No, I mean.
Something to happen.
I'll, I'll tell you that our company is very proud, you know, we, we made it through that recession of the, of the mid 2000s. The company was started in 94 and had some highs and lows throughout our history, but we've always continued to build. Part of it is, you know, the, the, you know, when, when somebody can't afford a $600,000 house and they still want a new house, they're going to buy one in, in our range. That is what we build. A lot of builders tend to slip into that higher level, and we like to stay in this mark and stuff. So in, in our selections that our customers select is, there's hundreds of them. You know, you buy our base house, you're going to have a Formica countertop. If you want granite, okay, it's X amount of dollars extra. If you want an upgrade cabinet and so on and so forth. So people can really fit to what meets their needs, their desires, their wants, and what they can afford. 60-foot lots, we should be able to get some third-car garages on these, which we sell a good amount of those at our value. A third-car garage, depending on the, the house, is $10,000 to $15,000. People do that all day long rather than paying for the basement, which is much more expensive. They, they like the convenience, that they're not storing things in their basement and everything else as well. But those are the type of options that we do. A minor deal, but all of our shingles are dimensional shingles. You asked about the colors or the exterior, what they look like. A lot of builders don't do that. We do the dimensional shingle. So again, if you drive through Union Spring, you'll see what our homes look like. And I think, you know, they're a good, good-looking house and, and materials that hold up over time.
So I don't want to put you on the spot, but you heard the discussion about the width of the lot.
Yes.
I mean, if, if that's an issue, is that still on the table, or would you rather not?
I mean, we could always look at it. I mean, I do feel like we, you know, at, at planning commission, they didn't like the 52. I agreed to go to 60. They did ask me to give an exact number, and I can't stand here and do that. And just, there's just, it's too complicated. I mean, one of the reasons we're here tonight, rather than two weeks ago, it just took my engineer a little bit of time to put that together. I mean, it all comes down to cost and the value of this. The, the, the cost of infrastructure, and you all pave streets, and every, every year, you know what kind of cost has gone up. Last year, our site development cost went up about 30%. So a linear foot of street is expensive, and that's what it all comes down to. Our houses are 40 feet wide, max, down to, I think, 38, 37, 38 feet. And then we range in depth from 40 feet to 50. And then we range in depth from 40 feet to 58 feet deep. So ideally, and I, I think this subdivision covers it, every one of the lots will fit every one of our house styles. Now, if the, if the engineer comes back and says, hey, five houses, or five of the lots have to be restricted, that's no big deal. To restrict a lot of them, that's an issue for us just because of variety. But that's really what it comes down to. And in this day and age, not only because of those costs per foot and everything else, but the customers, they don't want large, large yards. And yes, we got, you know, ones are a little bit wider at Iron Gate, but those lots have been sitting there since what, '07? Um, you know, we just, you know, bought up the last two. Um, we do, and I'll be real honest with you, we, we, we just made a deal today to buy four lots from another builder who had trouble in Union there and started foundations and the Union threw them out and we're going to tear the foundations out and build our own new homes there. But you know, that, that's a quick thing that'll happen later this year yet. Uh, but we also got, got those awfully doggone, you know, affordable and, and things. The lots over at Union Spring again were wider, but again, they sat there since '07, '08. Uh, the ones at Concord Meadows, I think those are narrower like these. I think they're 60s and 65s. Um, and, and there's some curvy, more curvatures to the road and things like that. So that's sometimes why they get a little bit wider, but that's very consistent with what's going on. Uh, we feel like we made a pretty good concession going from 52 to 60. But again, in the end, we'd like to get it approved. If, if something was asked to be less or greater than that, we'd have to look at it and see if it made sense.
I, yeah, I think it would be helpful for us to have some type of idea of if your lot sizes can get larger. I mean, I know the Planning Commission asked for 60 from six, from 60 to fit, or from 260 from 52, and that's fine. Um, but the Planning Commission also doesn't answer to the residents like we do.
Interesting.
So. And then I had one question for Amanda or Seth. If this preliminary plan is approved now, just for Arbor, um, and Arbor doesn't go through with it, does that stay in effect for any future developer or does it have to be re-approved?
No, it would stay in effect for any developer. Is that correct, Seth?
Sorry, was the question about the rezoning or the preliminary development plan?
The zoning change for this plan.
Yeah, so if, if the rezoning is approved, the rezoning would stay in effect, but for any other builder to come in, they would have to submit a modification, um, in, in basically a new final development plan.
Okay.
For, for Planning Commission and City Council's review and approval.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is tonight, are we approving both, or are what we are voting to possibly approve on both the rezoning and the preliminary development plan?
It, it is.
That, that's correct in this case. It's a rezoning and a preliminary.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Greg?
Just one, one quick question. You mentioned the footprint of, of the houses that you're building, you know, 38 by 40, basically the smallest size of.
In width. Yeah, depth, you know, again, it's going to go from 40, 38, that's really just one house to 40 by 60 is really the building pad that we design all the lots to, to allow that. That's inside the setback lines.
The, the one thing that, that's always, you know, you're in the news a lot as far as homes for persons that are wanting to age in place, or persons with disabilities. So essentially, do you have floor plan home that you have as part of your package that are essentially one-story?
I mean, the simple answer is yes, but it really takes a buyer. We don't build them as specs or market homes. If someone comes in and says, I want you to build me a house that's accessible or ADA compliant, we do that. We haven't done any in Ohio yet. We did three, I believe, last year in Indianapolis. Uh, so the company's able to do that. For the most part, um, you know, bedroom, bathroom doors might be 28. We widen them to three feet and things like that. There's some modifications that we have to make.
I'm thinking more in terms of single-story home with minimal amount of step up or no step up to go ahead.
Yeah, we, we have four standard slab elevations in our offerings currently. We're hoping to bring two more out later this year, but we were at 12. We're up to 14 total homes right now, but right now we have four, um, ranches that can be modified for that. And, and we have done that, like I said. I, I just know last year that the number was three in Indianapolis. We haven't, again, we haven't had a customer ask for that here yet, but we're required by law to do that.
Yeah, no, ADA, but essentially, you know, someone was with, okay, my day is '94. You know, if I needed to find a home to, you know, not put him in a home, but if I needed to relocate to another home per se, and I needed to get into a, you know, we can get a wheelchair into a standard, you know, standard doorway, but no steps, minimal type of things as far as navigating through a house on a single story.
Yeah.
That all amenities are right there.
It's something we can do and, you know, would, would generally take, hey, make, because sometimes it gets a step or two walking to the front door, usually one step, one into the garage. If someone comes in and says, hey, I don't need to do the full bore ADA, but I want to make sure I have no step access and we can design the house that way, we'll do that. Um, again, it's just a, handle it on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I just, you were talking about the, the floor plans that you have, that if someone were to come to you and essentially wanting something like this constructed, that it would fit within, if the, the 60-foot lot size that essentially would fit without having to do a lot of jockeying around.
Yeah, I mean, the, the one issue that we don't do, it's just standard with the ranches. There is some water infiltration issues with that that you just have to address. So it, it's sometimes easier to have one step going into a ranch, you know, the front door and things like that, but we can adjust it. It just takes another step of, of design and, and execution, but we, we do that. But again, the, the, so we can do that or we can do a full bore ADA compliant house. You know, lower cabinets, lower countertops, wider doors, you know, so on and so forth.
Thinking more along the line of not having to walk up steps.
Right, right. And that's something we can do.
Good question. Anything else for Arbor? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, council, I need to entertain a motion to open up the public comments.
Move to open up for the public forum.
Second.
Motion to open for public comments by Mr. Bachman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, folks, um, we are going to, pardon? Uh, we, so we're going to allow everyone to speak, um, a couple, just a couple of points of order. One, I have two, um, emails that we got from residents. It's been our policy to read these into, um, thank you, sir, into the record. Um, so I'll read these. I'm a pretty fast reader, um, so if you could bear with me on that. The other thing is we have, um, a five-minute limit that's in our council rules. So anybody that wants to speak, um, you, we'll ask you to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and, you know, you can say whatever you want for five minutes. You know, if you run five minutes and 15 seconds, you know, no one's going to give you the hook, but please, you know, there's a lot of people here and a lot of people want to speak, so we want to make sure everyone gets, we hear all, all the voices that, you know, that want to speak. You don't have to speak, but if you want to. And then after the opponents, we'll go with the opponents first and then with the proponents, if there's anybody here as a proponent, then we'll ask them to speak. Okay, everybody good on that? So it might, we have a lot of people here, so please be patient. So I'm going to read this, and the first one I'm reading is the, actually the letter that I, or that we had, that Dennis Lieberman had referenced earlier, and it goes like this. It's from Charles and Judy Sigler, 10-460 Haber Road, Inglewood, Ohio, 45322. And she, and they say, "Dear Mr. Lieberman, I wanted to express our concerns to the proposed rezoning of 42 acres of farm property facing Haber and Phillipsburg Roads. This proposal is slated for a council vote at the May 4th council meeting. My wife and I have lived on Haber for the last 30 years and we have 3.5 acres on the east side of Haber. We have a well and septic tank. We love it here. We have one neighbor to the north between us and the planned development. We had hoped over the years that being in an RCD2 zone, rural preservation," I'm just going to read them as they're written, of course, "would keep the area of farmland or at least having similar density of homes built as already on Haber. The proposed zoning is for PDD, medium-density subdivision. The preliminary development we saw is for a very high-density housing, average .15 acres per lot. This would mean 160 homes, three retention ponds, a wetland zone, and streets on 42 acres. Our concerns are: The high-density housing plan does not fit in well with the existing homes on Haber. Haber Road is a country road. It was not designed to handle the, the added traffic from 160 homes, each averaging two cars, many using Haber, trying to get it to State Route 40 in the morning or coming home in the evening. We have concern that the rezon is approved to PDD. It would permit the developer to later change their preliminary housing plan to multi-unit housing or low-income housing. Both would be very undesirable for our neighborhood. We are very concerned about our well water being permanently affected. The geology survey we saw in the proposal said the bedrock lying below the surface will either have to be ripped up or blasted to allow installing water and sewer lines from Union. What would this do to the water we drink? We will be at the meeting on May 4th, and I don't think they, they were not able to make it. We are hoping this proposal will not be approved. Thank you for reading and considering our concerns about the proposed rezoning." Uh, and I know he's not here because another one of our residents here dropped off a note. This is also from Mr. Sigler. I'm trying to read his writing. It's in pencil and his writing's about like mine. It's hard to read. Uh, "Rezoning 42 acres in Clayton, Haber Road. Concerns: Traffic. Haber Road not designed to handle high-volume traffic. Haber is country road with, uh, farm drainage, ditches on both sides, narrow, no-turn lanes, with proposed 155 homes and average home having two cars. This could be over 300 cars leaving in the morning and returning in afternoon, uh, going to work, going to school, school buses, good percentage traveling Haber Road. Haber not designed for that volume. Look at road improvements for Iron Gate on Phillipsburg. Extra turn lanes added on Phillipsburg. Curbs added, storm sewer added. Haber and Phillipsburg Roads will need some thing. Lanes added, not in the plan. And curbs and storm water collection. Concerns with water drainage and over the well. With third lane added to Haber Road, will extra runoff flood Haber Road, ditches during heavy rain? With trucking, I'm sorry, with trenching underlying bedrock can cause permanent damage to our well. Will, will trenching underlaying bedrock cause permanent damage to our well water?" And that's by, from Mr. Sigler at 10-460 Haber Road. And I have just one more to read, and this is from Megan Bias. She lives at 10-857 Haber Road, Inglewood, Ohio, 45322. My name is Megan Bliss, or Megan Bias, I'm sorry. My address is 10-857 Haber Road, Inglewood, Ohio, 45322. I received notice of the request for approval of a rezoning and preliminary development plan for Salem Springs, a proposed residential subdivision. I'm unable to attend the city council meeting on May 4th, 2023, but I want to make sure my voice is heard regarding this proposal. I do not support the rezoning. I am deeply concerned how it will affect my property, family, and the increased amount of traffic it will subject us to. We moved to this area to be in the country and raise our young family outside of the busy streets and noise. I'm also concerned how this will affect the flooding and water situation when we get a heavy rain. There's already water that floods out to the street when we get a lot of rain, and I can only imagine how the road will be flooded and, and closed with the housing development having water flow into the street. Due to the number of houses proposed to be built, I am also concerned about how this will affect my property value. This area has so much character and charm, and I strongly feel something like this will be robbing us of our neighborhood's charm and beauty. If you have further questions, please contact me at my information listed below." And again, that's from Megan Bias at 10-857 Haber Road, Inglewood, Ohio. So those are the two, uh, letters that we got, um, from residents, and they're now read into the record. And what I'm going to do, I'm going to use our, um, the list that you folks signed in on, and we'll, I'm just going to call folks by the, by the, um, you know, by the order that you, that you, um, signed in on. And if you want to speak, come up. If, you know, if you change your mind and don't want to, that's fine. Or if you wrote down no and would like to, um, still speak, you know, we'll give you that opportunity also. We want to hear everyone who wants to speak. Okay, it looks like first up is Larry Erbal. Come up, sir.
My name is Larry Erbal. I live at 10511 Haber Road. This is my place. That's my driveway where Arbor plans to dump all their traffic. Sorry. Sir, I was a police officer at City of Andalea till 2015 when I retired, currently as a police officer at My Valley Hospital North. I'll limit my comments to the Plan Clayton. Plan Clayton is comprehensive future land use following the 1999 Land Use Plan. It was a huge effort made by Clayton City leaders and stakeholders to engage over 300 citizens in producing a plan consistent with the views, opinions, and visions of the citizens. A resounding theme with that preservation of Clayton's rural agricultural lands and heritage. As in page eight under Legacy, is, as Clayton is a small, close-knit community that places value on neighborhood, families, small businesses flourish, and strong ties to the surrounding agricultural land. The vision of those leaders and citizens is clear: To enhance our small-town character and preserve our rural land, as quoted in the plan. Page 14 under Key Themes is to preserve and develop our small-town character. High-density housing is not small-town character. Considering environmental impacts, also page 14. Respecting environment and characteristics of the area rather than ignoring and destroying them. And a third, third key, uh, theme is to reduce sprawl, specifically urban sprawl. Focuses more on compact infill development rather than using the rural land to expand suburban neighborhoods. Page 16 of the plan, that even the 1999 Future Land Use Plan designated the area in question for single-family low-density. By definition, 50 to 80 feet wide, 130 feet deep. In fact, with the, uh, Plan Clayton come on, they reverted that back to agricultural land in 2013, indicating the desire that this land should remain rural and not high-density housing. Page 26. During interviews and through surveys and during discussions in the workshops, one thing was very clear: The people of Clayton see the rural areas of the city a strength that should be preserved. And page 29, as in, under Spot Development, is a key challenge to the City of Clayton. Spot development is, is disconnected locations throughout the rural districts of Clayton. It promotes and causes infrastructure inefficiencies. This development at hand will be surrounded by agriculture and heritage homes. Isolated from infrastructure, it has to get its water from Union and its sewer from Union. If you recall, Mr. Gorman, the vision that they, that they proposed is to enhance the small-town character, preserve rural land, create environments that support diverse businesses, and build a unique identity. The vision was to create walkable neighborhoods, connect parks, the little park is not connected. And they talked about Central Course, which is a different subject than here tonight. Page 38, the new regulation plan, Plan Clayton, updated from 1999 land use, shows the area in question to remain agricultural. Recognize the overwhelming response of the community to this planning effort. Also, homes on the west side of Haber are designated estate homes. They may be single-family, but they are estate homes, nothing near the proposed density or housing that they proposed for the, for this development. The long-range land use plan was established using public input, a process that should dictate future land use proposals. When they conflict, as they do in this situation, there should be a very good reason to go against this plan. Simply having a developer want to make a development is not a good reason. The proposed development is not consistent with the long-range plan the community has established, and therefore the zoning should not, should be denied. Plan Clayton is a solid, as the kids say, comprehensive land use plan, built on the visions of citizens. Citizens who value the rural agricultural legacy. visions of citizens, citizens who value the rural agricultural legacy reflected in their goals and comments throughout the plan. It's a promise made by the City of Clayton to those citizens by unanimous vote at City Council on May 3rd, 2018. It should be followed, otherwise there's no reason for it to exist. If the plan is not followed, how can we have confidence in what will happen to us in the future? Will we have to tolerate a warehouse? Maybe a Richmondian plastics recycling plant? Who knows what could happen with the zoning change? Please, counsel, respect the hard work of the community involvement in the Plan Clayton, respect the people whose time and vision went into it, respect the commitment to maintaining our rural heritage, respect the promise that the plan makes to the City of Clayton, and represent and deny the proposed zoning change. Questions, folks?
I don't think we'll be entertaining questions or comments, but we appreciate you coming up, sir. Thank you. I do want to say I made a mistake. I took page two, so Mr. Erbal should have been on down the list there on speaking, so I apologize for that. But we'll still make sure everyone gets on, of course.
My name is Dana. I live at 10511 Haber Road. This makes me upset.
Relax, we're...
So, we moved in 17 years ago, and there's a lot of changes that people are wanting to make that we're not happy with. I support the police and the fire, wholeheartedly, but you guys, and I listened to you guys when you first, when we first came in, and you said in a couple of years, it's distressed. I mean, the financial, are we going to have police and fire? And you're building all these homes, we don't have, we don't hardly see the police now. Nothing against them, I have no problem with them. They work their tails off, going from here, there, and everywhere. They, they don't have time. How are we going to, you guys are, they're wanting to build retention ponds on the back. How is that safe? It's not safe. You know, when, I see it all the time where I work. It's awful. How are they going to handle the volume? You know, we, we don't see them. We don't, we see cars flying by, and it's a concern. And the response time, because they're always busy, it's lagging. Nothing against them, they work their tails off. Just a concern that I have, and I support the letters that came in and the people that are going to speak today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm also going to speak a little bit about Plan Clayton.
We state your name and address, that's all right.
Yep. My name is Dana York. I live at 10635 Haber Road. Right here is the house my wife actually grew up in, and we just purchased it from my in-laws. So you can see here on Plan Clayton, as, as was already stated, you know, one of the things was to reduce sprawl in the key themes. If you go to the next page, the 1999 existing future use map, it was single-family low-density, and then it was changed to agricultural. And there's a reason why it was changed to agricultural. So the current zoning map here is, on the next page, you can see it was zoned RCD2, which is the furthest thing away from what they're proposing to build here, the absolute furthest thing away. Next here, it's the key strengths. So this is actually the map of Clayton, and it shows the strengths that we have. Number one is rural areas, that was already spoken to. But number two is buffer area. So I'm going to assume that's why that was changed from single-family to agricultural or residential, or, sorry, RCD2, is to give us a buffer in between Union, because I believe the consultants that put this together said it's good to have a buffer in between cities to make it your own. And then also, if you look at number nine here, regional flood plan, or regional flood plane. It's a strike because it moves water away, but it's also, it's also, I didn't have that page in here, it's also a concern because it also floods properties. It borders right up with this property. So the existing neighborhood map is the next page, it's in Plan Clayton. I actually did a lot of research, and I looked at every single home that's in this area, if you look at where Phillipsburg Union and Putnam is, and pulled the acreage of every single home, it's on the next page, and quite a few other pages after that. The first ones there highlighted in yellow are actually the ones that run along here, and they're all five acres. If you take all the homes and look at the total acreage, it's 261 acres, 261.41, with a total of 93 homes. That's a lot size of, on average, of 2.81. So the fact that we're being told that, yes, it's, this land borders an existing potential future neighborhood, it has, it's nothing like the neighborhood that's already there. If you go to the next page, you know, the plan for that neighborhood, the proposed neighborhood plan, there already is a neighborhood there. It's landlocked. You can't build behind those homes. There's a home along Putnam, there's a homes along Phillipsburg Union, all the way down there. You can't build out like that. They're landlocked. It's impossible. There already is a rural neighborhood there. I know a lot of people that live in that area. The new regulating plan also calls for this to be agricultural. So, like I said, planning vision is to preserve our rural land. That's one of the four things there. If you go to the next page, using the plan, and I love this quote, "A plan is worth no more than the paper it is printed on, if not used by the people it is intended for." That's what, I believe, quite a few of you actually signed this plan, as a promise to help implement this for the city. I would also like to call out that this PDD district, if you guys choose to approve this tonight, it will be changed to PDD. PDD, to me, is essentially giving a blank check to a developer, letting them fill it out, and giving it to you to see if you'll cash it. That's the whole thing. There's hardly any regulations that says a lot size, they could do, you know, far less than, it was .13 acres, now it's .15, they can go even less than that. It's a blank check to do whatever you would like, really. Like, if you look, the, the thing that was approved by the Planning Commission, if you were to actually build the homes that were on that plan, you couldn't build it anywhere in Clayton, even if it was zoned residential already. Can't. The lot size is too small, per our zoning code. Also, in the zoning as well, the ponds, the ponds in our zoning code have to be 50 feet away from property lines or easements. These aren't. So technically, they have to make the ponds smaller already. I've done a lot of research on this, guys. There's a lot of things that we're putting, we're putting the cart before the horse, all right? There's even in the implementation plan for Plan Clayton, it calls out that if you want to go down Haber and develop there, that you need to do road improvements and widen the road, and put sidewalks in and do things before you put homes there, not after. I'm asking you to please say no to this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening, good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time. My wife, Amy, and, my name is John Roberts, I live at, my wife and I live at 10829 Haber Road. And we moved on Haber Road in 1999 to raise our children in a rural community. Just a couple of things that we've come up with, that on Haber Road has a natural aquifer under it, cited directly from Montgomery County's website, where the main water aquifer comes through our properties to that area. And according to the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, the lithology of the aquifer was interbedded carbonate, so which means it's limestone, sand, and shell. And again, according to the Ohio EPA, most of the wells located on Haber Road are drilled into sand gravel. What becomes of our wells if the limestone, you know, is destroyed from this development? Really concerned about that. Causing contamination within those wells and our drinking water. What do we do about that? I heard something earlier about it becomes a civil matter. I mean, I don't want to have to sue a developer because my water is run, or my well, doesn't make sense. So, you know, can we look forward to City of Clayton paying for that, if this happens? I don't want to have to pay for it. So, you know, the, it's just, you know, the depth of the natural aquifer varies down Haber Road. And, you know, seeing and heard on some of these pictures, I just don't know how we're going to, how we can handle this, I really don't. And it's, it's very upsetting because, you know, we've lived there since 99, and now you're talking about building 160-some homes, and we've all got five-acre lots in a rural setting. And we don't want those kind of homes. We're not opposed to development, but nothing like this. It just does not make sense to us. So, my wife and I are totally against it, along with all the other people that are here this evening. I agree with everything that's going to be said in regards to this proposal about this land. And, I mean, we've experienced a foot of water in our basement, you know, but we've learned to deal with that, and we know how to take care of it. So if this water has to go somewhere, is it going to come back on our property again? I mean, you know, we haven't heard any of this. It's just that they'll take care of it. How are they going to take care of it? You know, so, but anyway, as I said, my wife and I are totally against, against this, and we just ask that you don't approve this redevelopment plan. I really do, so, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And Amy said she didn't want to speak. Did you change your mind on that? You wanted to come up? Okay, okay, thank you. Lawrence Baker?
Uh, I don't have it.
No, okay, thank you. Sandy and Rob Spitler, check no, didn't change their mind. Earl Harlemur, check no.
Hello, I'm Ellen Hogan, along with Jeremy Blandford, at 10801 Haber. Jeremy's out of town, so he can't attend tonight. I'm going to read some thoughts that we put together before this evening, is a proposal to rezone approximately 42 acres of rural farmland, currently zoned as RCD2, to a planned development district, allowing for 155 new homes to be built. This is by no means not in our backyard scenario. There's not anybody here that doesn't want to see building upon this site. Like many others have spoken, we want development that matches the houses that are already there. We want to allow the landowner or the trust in this case to sell, to be able to sell the land that is rightfully theirs. We want to make it perfectly clear to the group, no one that lives within the area in question has or will ever keep that person from selling the land. You may or may not have heard the term prior land use this evening. We can look at many things in the past, but it does not change the fact that this body made the conscientious decision to change the zoning classifications within the last handful of years. This body, bought in recommendations from staff, made this parcel and virtually every other parcel not yet built upon, that currently lies north of Fox Road, between Haber and Diamond Mill to the Miami County Line Road, as a rural conservation district parcels. We did not do this. This was voted on by council. Clayton spent a large sum of money to have Plan Clayton developed. We, as a community, collaborated and developed a plan. So we ask you to ponder a question. How many of the developers have walked in and said, "We like Plan Clayton, we agree with it, we are willing to build within the parameters as they are written"? Not one. This proposal is the largest number of houses within the smallest buildable acreage of any subdivision brought forth in the last few years. If the developer was truly interested in building with our community of Clayton, we would not have land contracts hinge on being able to change a parcel's zoning, or getting easements changed. We have land just south of this parcel that is deemed as a medium-density residential. RCD2 calls for large lot residential. As stated in the city zoning definitions, these lots should be at least 10 acres in size. RCD1 calls for two-acre parcels as well. Yet, we are not here tonight to change the zoning to even RCD1, which as a group have stated before, that we are fine with. The only problem is the developer is unwilling to do this, which was also stated by them in the last meeting. By allowing this to go through this evening, you send two very distinct messages to the citizens of Clayton. Plan Clayton is nothing more than a very expensive bookend that we are no longer building to, building the city to our vision, but rather whatever the developers see as their vision for our city of Clayton. Zoning is purely a formality, to be bent to the developer's whim, as you have set forth a precedent for which no recourse since the first RCD property to be bought forth for a change in the zoning. The zoning was put in place to protect the residents currently living in the City of Clayton. It's not put in place for the potential future residents. Plan Clayton is about preserving the heritage of our city. This is the backbone of what makes Clayton the place it is today. A subdivision of this magnitude fits about as well within the plan as our horse trailers fit inside our garages, and they really don't. In closing, I would ask that each of you seriously think what allowing this to go forward will do for Clayton? I've always told my kids growing up that with any situation, you should look at every possible outcome and weigh the pros and cons. Perhaps this is better suited to be tabled or voted down so that all the information received can be reviewed and absorbed. Any questions? Thank you.
Hello, Kristy Cox, 209 Kimmel Road. I'm not on Haber. I'm, I'm actually here just, I wanted to talk about something else, but with all the comments, I thought I'd need to get up and make a few comments here, because I was involved in the, in the merger when it took place back in, what, 1998, Greg, I think, right? So, and I was against the merger. And the reason why is because I honestly felt that it was being misrepresented. And I think tonight, listening to comments and stuff, everybody should realize that one thing that sold it to the people in the township, in the village, was to prevent something like this from happening. It was, there would, people were promised to, that there would be a... not, not this, not this, okay? That's what was promised to these people out here in the rural area when the merger was passed. I don't know, Mike, did you live in this area at the time?
I did live here, but I, I was out of the loop on that, so.
Right, well, I know Tim knows, Greg knows, Tina knows, and Dennis knows. What was promised to these people? You were all involved in the merger, okay? So that was one thing. Greg, you made some good points. Wanted to call those out. I know some people moved here in 1999 after the merger was passed, and they moved out there because that's what, that's what was presented. That was the premise. It was going to be rural preservation, and they were going to, you know, when you buy a house and there's open land, you know that it's going to be developed, but the promise was made to these people that the developed land would be, it'd be a buffer. And that's, that, this is just not anything close to what they have currently, and that's what was promised. I know that. That was promised by the committee, merger committee, the charter committee. I mean, I can go on because I was at all those meetings. And I, I'm just really disappointed. It's such a misrepresentation, and I feel sorry for these people that live out there right now. And a good point was made about the Village of North Clayton. The developer even said that he's, they're not going to develop this whole thing all at one time. So what happens if something, if the bottom falls out and it's, it's one-fourth developed? Then what happens next? You know, is it going to be doubles being built out there, apartments to finish it off? I mean, that's what, if you pass this zoning, it's only going to allow other, you know, a reissue of another zoning code later on. So, that's really all I have to say. I'm just really disappointed. I just, I'm very disappointed.[756.62][756.62](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, ma'am. Dave and Pam Gruze, check no. Have they changed their minds? Nope. Steve Hensley?
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council, city planner and legal director. I appreciate your service here. I know it's not an easy job. You're like holding down the four stakes of a tent. You need to promote what's best for the city, preserve what's best for the neighborhood. You also need to be principled in your judgment, and you need to listen to members of the public like us. So thank you for, for managing the four Ps, if you will, of your job. As we consider how you do that, that's a tricky balancing act, I was interested in what the code itself says, so I looked at the Planning and Zoning Code. I think together, you know, one reason we have a city council is to uphold the Planning and Zoning Code, and so I was curious as to what it said. I note that Section 5.7 says, "One of the principles here is to stabilize expectations regarding future development of the city, thereby providing a basis for wise decisions with respect to such development." So I appreciate you listening to us as you consider how to make wise decisions that do, in fact, stabilize expectations regarding future development. I'll lay my cards on the table. I ask that you reject this proposal. As I do that, I'd like to also ask that we understand that the proposal needs to be within balance. We need to not only promote what might look like a good idea from some vantage points, we also need to preserve the character of current neighborhoods. So I'd like to, again, read from the code, which requires certain principles be upheld. Number one, the comprehensive plan. Number two, factoring in and considering, quote, "current conditions and the character of current structures and uses in each district." Later on, it talks about providing for the desirable appropriately located living areas in a variety of dwelling types and at a suitable range of population densities with adequate provision for sunlight, fresh air, and usable open space. And so that you can make an informed decision, I brought a few facts and figures about the current conditions and the character of the current structures. I know others have mentioned some facts. I base my facts on personal observation and also Zillow.com as of yesterday and today. The average square foot, square, size, or in square foot, of the 11 of the 12, I should say, of the properties immediately across the street from the part of the development that joins Haber Road, 11 of the 12 properties have residences. And so I'm focusing on those 11. The average size in square foot is just over 2,400 square foot. The average lot size for the single-family homes on the west side of Haber, opposite the planned development, is 5.1 acres. Houses are constructed, one of wood, most of brickstone or masonry, as described on Zillow, or as I personally observed, some solid brick, some brick wrap with brick inciting. We have a variety of styles. I'm not an architect, but I believe we see ramblers and colonials, maybe a Cape Cod. All of them that I could confirm, that's 10 of the 11 have a garage. All of them have one or more fireplaces with one converted to gas. And somewhat at odds with a comment that was made earlier, perhaps because it's based on older information, the property values, as of today, on Zillow.com range for those 11 properties from 331,000 to 542,000, with half of them over 385,000. So to approve of this plan, in my opinion, would not preserve the current conditions and character of current structures if we cannot confirm that the attributes of the planned houses in this development would have these features. If we can't confirm that some of these characteristics alone would be suitable grounds for, for rejecting this appro, this proposal. However, there should be no question on the grounds of suitable range of population densities, again, as called out in Section 1101.O2, Purpose and Intent. In fact, the, you might say it's the reason we have a code is to encourage and require suitable range of population densities. And here, there's no defense of the proposal, in my opinion. I believe, in my own opinion, speaking for myself only, a suitable zoning of, of current farmland would be RCD II, 10-acre plots, or RCD I, two-acre plots. I believe any, either of those would maintain a principle of incremental change, which I believe is always going to be required. Incremental change is fine, in my opinion, but comparing 5.1-acre lots per household or per dwelling to what's being proposed, one dwelling per 0.15-acre lots, that's not a change of two to one or 2.5 to one. That's a ratio of 32 to one. And that's like that old cereal commercial, how many bowls of the leading cereal would it take to get the amount of fiber in this, you know, our brand? 32 to one, it's, it almost seems ridiculous, but, but that's a drastic change. And, and I, and I would just ask, if you're, if you're looking at the, the Planning and Zoning Code and asking the question, are we preserving the current condition, conditions, the character of current structures, and the suitable range of population densities? I think we have to reject that. I know earlier, the leading defense of the planned, the PDD was, was that it would, quote, "would not be out of character for this area." But it certainly would for this neighborhood, and, and I think that's the concern we all have. Now, just a note on variety of dwelling types, and again, that's mentioned in the code, provide for desirably, desirable, appropriately located living areas in a variety of dwelling types. I think one way to, to achieve variety is to try to force it in every neighborhood. We need something different here. We need something different here. I think the, the appropriate way we maintain the code and we ensure there's variety is, is by actually preserving the character of each neighborhood. Because each neighborhood has its own, as was read, it has its own charm. Each neighborhood has its own attributes. And multi-acre lots provide a place for families with children, to allow the children to play. Green spaces also noted in the code for, for families with children, to teach children to raise pets, to allow a family to have a family garden. These are all important. The homes in the, of those 11 homes, at least three are one-story. There are also two-story homes and split levels. And I think it's important to allow one-story homes as well in the character of the neighborhood. That's important for families, maybe with elderly parents that need to live on a single level, or people with disabilities, or, or even people with, with knee problems, as I increasingly seem to be in that category. Because it allows for, you know, navigation from the kitchen to the bathroom to the bedroom to the office or the garage easily on, on one floor for people who cannot easily navigate stairs. So, in conclusion, I, I think it's already been said, the inventory strength, number one, is our rural areas, that people want that strength of Clayton to be preserved. I'd also like to read from the plan, a quote from Jack Coons, "While not an economic development plan itself, Plan Clayton provides the tools for Clayton to grow in a way that attracts the economic development we need while building a community which is responsive to the desires of our residents." And I ask that you would be responsive to the desires of the residents who would most directly be impacted should this proposal be approved. I ask specifically that you reject this proposal in response to the desires of these residents. Thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
No questions, but thank you very much.[1320.11][1320.11](APPLAUSE). All right. Michael and Lori Studi?
Hi. Michael Studi and my wife Lori, we live at 4675 Phillipsburg Union Road, Englewood, Ohio. We are five properties to the west of Haber Road. And unlike the lot sizes that were advertised, we have 10 acres, and we are agricultural zoning, and we would like for that area to stay as such. Most of the things that I wanted to bring up and speak to have already been stated eloquently by people ahead of me, so I'm going to not waste your time with some of those. However, one thing that, well, first of all, as opposed to, or in response to thoughts about the flooding of the area. There was just a few years ago when the entire area was closed by the police department. No traffic. You could not navigate the roads. Yes, it was a large rain. It wasn't caused by Haber Road residents draining into the ditch. It was caused by the ditches not working eastward through Union and through Clayton. The ditches, very ditches, that this development are going to rely upon to drain not only our land, which is already draining into it, but another development. Because we would be relying on the city of Union to maintain the storm. And I don't think anybody that is worth their salt in business would rely on another business for your water, for your sewer, for your storm drainage. There's no natural gas in the area. That has to come through property of Union. So we're, we're trying to build our house upon someone else's foundation, and I think that's bad. It's bad in that the plan even states that you don't want to get ahead of the infrastructure. The infrastructure has to be placed in place for development. It, it states that you don't want to scatter your development, yet the furthest south portion of Clayton has a development. There's one on Hope Road, and now there's one being proposed, Haber Road, which is exactly one mile from the northernmost part of the city and the county. The plan indicated a central city for urban area, and the outlying areas would remain rural. So to even consider something like this is, I believe, being cavalier with honesty. Because everything that this city was agreed upon is in this plan, and yet we're doing everything in this development against what the plan even states. There's comparison to the adjacent properties. I lived there, and they were very well described. They're nothing like this property. And I don't care about the city of Union's Iron Gate property. That's not Clayton. It's not our concern. We need a buffer between Union and the houses in Clayton. And that is stated in the plan. And the plan specifically indicates to buffer our city, our residents, from the growth westward and northward of other cities. So why are we concerned with the housing or lot size with what's in Iron Gate? It's no, no concern to us. You should compare this development with the properties that are directly across the road of Haber and adjacent to it, and they're all far larger and far different. And it hasn't been mentioned yet, but when I look at this, not an expert, but everybody on Haber Road's going to be looking at the backyard of all those houses, which is the least attractive part of anyone's home. It's where they stash the things that they're not allowed to put in front. There's a mound drawn in, proposed, at the edge of Haber Road, which, by the way, will only prevent water running away from Haber Road. I see that in 10 years looking like Sweet Potato Ridge, where you have all these monstrous overgrown pine trees that are too close, and everybody's cutting bottoms off, so they look like telephone poles when you drive down the street, and they don't block anything because you can see underneath all the trees. So I don't really see that being of any value. So you're basically forcing people to look at the back of someone's house. And that's not really the quality of life that these folks paid for when they moved out there. Everybody out there moved away from the city. If we wanted to live in the city in, in close confinement, in a planned development, we would live there. We would've stayed there. And that's not what we're after. And we ask that you consider us and not the tax dollars that this could minimumly bring in, because we're going to have to pay, certainly has to be some agreement with Union to use all their utilities to provide this, so there cannot be the tax base that you want. And even earlier, you said that there was really no money in the taxes of residential. It's in commercial. So why aren't we looking to develop commercial and allow the city to have more income before we try to sprawl out and create a bunch of houses without a real clear vision of what our plan stated, and just allowing people to make proposals that are in direct conflict of it? I appreciate your time, and that's really all I have to say. I, I do ask that you reject the proposal.[1718.11][1718.11](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, sir. Did Mrs. Studi, did you want to say anything or anything further? Okay.
I think he did, yes.
He did. Thank you. Lori King?
Hello. Lori King, I'm at 10763 Haber Road. I am smack in the middle.[1729.11][1729.11](LAUGHTER).
all their utilities to provide this. So there cannot be the tax base that you want. And even earlier, you said that there was really no money in the taxes of residential. It's in commercial. So why aren't we looking to develop commercial? And allow the city to have more income before we try to sprawl out and create a bunch of houses without a real clear vision of what our plan stated, and just allowing people to make proposals that are in direct conflict of it. I appreciate your time, and that's really all I have to say. I do ask that you reject the proposal.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Studi, did you want to say anything, or anything further? Okay. He did, thank you. Lori King?
Lori King, I'm at 10763 Haber Road. I am smack in the middle of all this nonsense. I don't have anything written like everybody else did. I'm just going to go from my heart. My parents moved out there. They built the house 50 years ago, okay? They have since, they're gone now. But my family has moved out there. We've lived there for 15 years now. I've raised my children there. They are grown. They were able to enjoy the farm land, the horses and stuff, due to my kind neighbors. They were able to enjoy their go-karts and whatnot through all of this. If this is developed across the street, you know, even though we still have that five acres, that is being taken away. That country field that my parents moved us out from the city of Dayton and the terrible part of it, moved us out there to get us away from that, you know, all of that is going to be gone. I'm just going to show you something, if you don't mind. This is what I see today, okay? That's what I see today. Tomorrow, I'm going to see the back of people's houses and their back doors. And I don't think that that is something that we should have to look at. You know, that is why we moved out there. And this is what I want to continue seeing, not the back of somebody's yard. So, just please, please deny this. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Stevenson is not going to speak unless he changes his mind. Pam Bowman?
Hi. My name is Pamela Bowman. My husband is actually Brian Stevenson. And we live at 4486 Phillipsburg Union Road. Our house is this one, right here. So, this is in our backyard. And I really hope that you don't do it. We don't approve of it. I mean, it's like, it's like she said, we live out here because we don't want to be part of the city. We want to be away. We want to be out. We want to see farmland and country. I grew up with horses and pigs and chickens, and I want that for my children. And can I do that? Not if you build a neighborhood in my yard. Like, we can't do that. We don't want that. We want the beauty of the land. That's why we live out there. And what about our kids? I mean, my daughter's friend, she lives here. My daughter and my son, they live there. My daughter doesn't understand what you're doing. She heard me talking about building houses in our backyard. She's terrified of it. My son, he's not going to understand what the sound of that loud equipment is at 7:30 in the morning when construction starts. He's nine months old. He's not going to know. It's going to scare him. They're not going to understand that. And it's not fair to us to have to deal with that. So, I just hope that you don't do it. That you leave us in peace. You have plenty of other areas to build neighborhoods. You don't have to do it there. Like he said, leave that area of 40 alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Rail, check no unless he changed his mind, as did Bonnie Vaughn and Dale Vaughn, if they want to speak. No. Jeff Eubanks, is that right? Eubanks. Step up, sir.
Jeff Eubanks, I live at 4590 Phillipsburg Union Road. We are two houses down west of Haber Road. So our property doesn't border it, actually doesn't look upon it, but we will be impacted by this. I don't want to state what many of our fellow neighbors have already said, but a couple of things I would like to add. First of all, under the current plan, we've got land already designated for city or single-family homes that based on my estimate on this code's density could build over 2,000 single-family homes already. Why are we looking to put another 162 all the way out here? We can't get a development completed already that thinks we approved. Now, I will change to a positive thing. I'm a contractor. I have a business in Union. I've lived in this community since 1991. I've lived in Bayberry Trails. We moved out of there because we wanted into a country because of what was being done in Bayberry Trails. Beautiful community, but we wanted country living for our kids, all right? And that's not what this is doing. Mr. Gorman was the only one that was here when we bought this house. We, actually, this month is our 23rd anniversary in this house. When we bought this house, two years later, most of us neighbors had well problems, tested positive for E. coli. We approached the city of Clayton to help us with that problem. We actually had a petition where we got all the road frontage and all the landowners to support, asking you to run the water up Haber to Phillipsburg Union. You rejected it, or at least the council at that time did. But instead, what you, the council did, was borrowed money from Montgomery County to run the water lined out Sweet Potato, under the auspices that the airport expansion needed it. Now, how that was going to get to the airport, don't exactly know, all right? But that water was put in. Not one home was ever built. No tap-in fees were ever collected, no water bills were ever collected, but that water was run out there. We're still without water. We're all on wells. That water could have been run out towards us to help us in the community. The folks over here, excuse me, the Browns, that just bought this house right here, I talked with them there yesterday, they're well-tested, positive for E. coli. We've all had to put in expensive filtration systems to battle this. Mr. Gorman, you were here when we tried to present that. None of you, now, I know most of you are lifelong residents, but none of you here were part of that. None of the staff was here. We were ignored then. Hopefully, you don't ignore us this time, all right? The other thing I would like to mention, and a positive note, as a contractor, I know a little bit about Arbor Homes. I would be proud to have them developing in my community. They do a nice job. They do quality work, but this isn't the place for it. We have plenty of areas where that can be done already. Don't add to it. Let's keep that. One of the things that was mentioned that is really enjoyable about our area is to wake up and see the deer, the fox, the very small other animals, the wildlife that comes through. You put this in here, you're going to drive them out. We won't see it anymore. We used to own horses, and many of my neighbors do. We were, the farmer, the people that owned the land would let us ride out there. Many of those horses might go away. It's neat to hear the chickens from the neighbor, the rooster. Sometimes it gets a little irritated in the morning, but that's part of living in the country, to experience that. How many chickens are going to be in these homes? I don't think there's going to be any. So my wife and I, along with many of our neighbors, ask that you reject that. Again, we'd love to have Arbor Homes building homes in our community, in our city, all right? But this isn't the place for it. We do need to increase our revenue, but again, this isn't a place for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Scott Anderson? You're up next.
So, Mr. Mayor and the council, thank you all very much for taking the time to listen to our concerns tonight. My name is Scott Anderson. I'm at 10581 Haber Road. I own Advent Christmas Tree Farm, along with my wife, and we are very proud members of the city of Clayton. We understand the growth and the development of the city of Clayton, that it's good for the community, it's good for us. We're small business owners, so something like this might be very attractive to us. However, that's not what we're all about. We moved out to that particular area because of what we see out there and what many people have already talked about. As a resident of this farming community, my primary concern centers on the retaining that rural heritage of our neighborhood and, of course, the surrounding community. We've mentioned that already quite a bit. Preserving that rural heritage is a point made at least 13 times. You've already heard that agnostium tonight. In our case, the current RCD-2 zoning protects the rural heritage, which has served us well for many, many years, and I think we all can agree to that. The proposal on the table to rezone the area in question moves us well away from that. Here are my concerns. I've got two primary concerns: safety, fire, and crime. That's not been brought up yet. With the increased density pattern recommended by Arbor Homes, we can expect that the potential for safety, fire, and crime will increase. For example, departing out of my farm during our busy selling season will be a significant safety concern, as turning, heading south out of my parking lot is a very challenging thing to do. It's a very hard turn to the right. That's going to be very near to the entrance for this particular development. In my industry, stealing Christmas trees is one of the most prevalent issues farmers like me have to deal with when we are located near a high-density area. And then, number three, getting fire police support for the neighbors have been a challenge recently because of the proximity that we have to Englewood and to Union, and the fact that that combined dispatch causes confusion. And many of my neighbors have had problems in getting fire and the police department even out there to do what needs to be done. Potential for blasting. That will, in all likelihood, pollute our well water, of which I am highly dependent on. Water from the development will come from the city of Union, as we've already heard. They will not feel the impact if there is any need for blasting. Instead, that impact will be felt by the residents with wells as their primary source of water. We have no recourse for blasting. If it pollutes the water we will, that we use for ourselves and our livestock, and for me, my nursery operation, it's going to be a major concern for us. Others will speak of flooding issues. We've already heard some of that. Increased traffic, increased student load on the Northmont schools, impact to our livestock from noise pollution, from fireworks, believe it or not, that's a major thing out there. Pollution from home and street lights, all of which I fully support. We are family of modest means that live on Haber Road and the surrounding area. If I, I certainly don't have the means to outright purchase the land at the asking price of $600,000 when it was first put on the market. I don't think any of us have that kinds of means. It seems incredulous to me that a company such as Arbor Homes, which has deep pockets for these kinds of purchases, can actually come in and drive change to our city and our neighborhood. We have lived in our, lived and worked in and around our farm and the land that we have there for many, many years. It's been 17 years for us. We ought to feel shielded by the zoning statutes that should protect our community and our rural heritage. However, it is unjust for a company with no sweat equity in the community to be able to come in and drive change to our zoning regulations so they can make a significant return on their investment on the backs of those Clayton citizens who have long-served and paid taxes in Clayton. All of us want to be good community neighbors and citizens of Clayton. Therefore, I believe there is a win-win-win for all of us, the city, for Arbor Homes, and for the neighborhood. I recommend that this council reconsider rezoning from Rural Conservation District 2 to a Rural Conservation District 1, rather than the planned development as we've talked. This is a win for the city in that it increases the tax base while not burdening our schools, our police force, or our fire departments. It benefits Arbor Homes in that it allows them to gain a return on investment, though perhaps not as much as they'd like to get. And it benefits the neighborhood, that is, it benefits the neighborhood in that the land in question puts to good use that which will increase the property values without potentially devastating the impact of high-density housing that drives concerns for traffic, safety, well pollution, flooding, noise, and light pollution. So please, say no to the request to rezone RCD-2 to PDD, and instead, consider RCD-1 as a winning alternative for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Leanne Bustos? Bustos, sorry.
I'm Leanne Bustos. I live at 9240 Haber Road. So I'm down between Fox and State Route 40. And I, one of the things I want to mention, we moved here two years ago. We lived in a big house on a quarter acre in Centerville. Our idea when we retired was to live more rurally. And Clayton was the place we chose based on some of the information you even have on your website and some of the videos that we saw and things. And I feel like we're almost doing a disservice to those people like us. Yeah, there's a lot of people that don't want a house with a big yard. But there are people that do, and this can be the place, you know, for them. But the main reason I wanted to talk today is I have witnessed personally a couple of really serious traffic issues in the last couple of months. And I'm not sure why traffic is up. I mean, obviously, school's in session, that's some of it, but this is not all 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. This is throughout the day. A boy from Northmont actually had to jump over my storm sewer and run up to my gate to not be hit, walking home from school. And the kids, I don't know if it's a PE class or the track team, run up and down the streets, you know, for their, part of their training or whatever they're doing. I actually called the school because you'd get cars that would slow down for the kids, and then you'd get somebody five cars behind that didn't know why they were slowed down, and they're flying around them on the other side and almost hitting the kids. And, you know, we have the new subdivision that's going to go in at Haber and National Road. That hasn't even started yet. So, all the cars that we have now are not even from the new development we're already, you know, have approved and is going to, is going to happen. So, we're going to add hundreds more cars on top of what we already have, and it's gotten, I mean, it's gotten actually frightening. We actually came home one day and our mailbox was completely off-lane in our yard. Somebody hit it, knocked it, just coming clear off the post, everything, the post's all wobbly. I mean, it's, it's, people drive really fast, they don't pay a whole lot of attention, and unfortunately, there's, you know, what worries me most is the kids out there. I mean, it really, I have a tendency now to watch outside at 3:00 because I know the kids will come by. And, and I just feel like, you know, adding even more cars, knowing that we're going to get the development across the street, and then just, you know, what quarter, half a mile down the road, a second development, I just think it would be a crisis ready to happen. I mean, I'm scared all the time. I don't even like to go out mow my lawn out at the very edge because I'm afraid somebody will hit me. So, I just wanted to, you know, make sure that I let, you know that, I agree with everybody else about what they've said. I think that it's just too, too much in one little, small, you know, one-mile area to have so, you know, you've got all these lots, everybody's been up here talking, they've got four, four acres, five acres, 10 acres. We have four acres. Feel like we have a small lot. So, you know, it just, it just doesn't seem like it would fit in. And there's so many places around the city that aren't finished, you know, like the place over by Esther Price. Let's get some of those other things finished up, and we've got the new development that we're going to have at Haber and National, so let's get through all of those things first. That's all. I just wanted to tell you about the kids because it was worrying me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Maurice, check no, so you're good. Thank you. Doug Bias?
That's all right, thank you. Well, Mr. Mayor and members of this body, I thank you for your time here. I know it's late. I myself have been up since 4:00 AM, and so I appreciate it. I myself have been up since four AM, and so I appreciate you all being here late this evening. My name is Dr. Doug Bias, and I'm a local emergency department physician. And I live at 10-857 Haber Road, which is this property right here. And my wife and I, we've lived here with our two young daughters since 2019. Very happy to have moved out here. It was, when we drove out here, I remember driving down Haber Road the first time to take a look at, you know, this listing we had seen, and just a beautiful country drive. I mean, it really is what first drew us into this area here. When we moved here from Kettering, we had many options for a new home available to us. Being a physician, and many of my colleagues tend to live south of Dayton, and many of them are in Oakwood, Springboro. I don't really fit in with those types of people. I wear western boots in the ER myself. My wife and I were horse owners, and we were drawn to this area as it had a nice blend of being a rural community, but still in close proximity to many various amenities. Many of us along Haber, in fact, own horses and other livestock. There are many horse owners all along this whole strip here. We bought this property knowing that the field across the street could someday be developed. We don't own the property. We have no control over it. But understanding that it was zoned as a Rural Conservation District, that zoning suggested to us that the city has an interest in conserving the rural nature of it, as the name overtly implies. Now, I'm, I'm sure I speak for many of us along Haber, and many have already mentioned it, when I say we're not opposed to development of this field. None of us own this field, therefore, none of us control it. However, I would respectfully request that you strongly consider and preserve the character of the area that we already have. Each one of our properties on the west side of Haber, our five-acre lots have already been mentioned. There are already two properties of, as has already been pointed out, there on the north end of that whole strip there. I believe they're at least two acres themselves. Mr. Dorman showed a satellite photo earlier that showed the parcel surrounded by other RCD-zoned areas and RSD parcels. This proposed zoning change to PDD takes us to the extreme. Mr. Hensley's already mentioned, this is not an incremental change, this is a drastic change from RCD X to a PDD, which to my understanding, has very few limitations of what can be built there. There are minimal limitations to lot size, as far as I understand. In fact, anything could be built there, including an Amazon warehouse, if I'm not mistaken. With regards to minimal lots sizes, these houses are going to be crammed into this area. This is going to become a sardine can. That's a sardine can. I was at the zoning committee last month, and several members of the zoning committee openly expressed their concern that the density of the properties was too high. With the plans presented last month, there were 162 houses proposed. About half of these were about 52 to 55-foot width lots, the other were 60-foot lots. One of the zoning committee members expressed concern about the high density and motioned to approve a potential zoning change with conditions that each lot be a minimum of 60 feet. The individual stated they weren't able to do the math in their head, but a minimum of 60-foot lots sounded good. They also had mentioned that the houses were likely going to be 10 feet apart. Not much space in between. I'm six foot six. I mean, you add another three and a half feet to me, that's the distance between these houses. They clearly didn't realize that this would not change the amount of houses significantly, and as we've seen, it drops the number by seven. This is wholly inconsistent with the character of the surrounding Clayton properties. Again, I ask you to consider the surrounding area. You may have an interest in development of this parcel, and you may choose to pursue it someday, but it doesn't have to be with this developer or this proposed plan. Approving this plan, as I mentioned, would be no small change. I also respectfully request that you consider the traffic implications of this, as has already been mentioned, so I won't really harp on that, spend, I'll spare your time. But, Mr. Mayor, you said you don't want to create a mess. This current plan will create a mess, and I don't believe the city is ready to support the infrastructure it will require. If roads, if Haber needs to be expanded, there's gonna be a barrier, a landscape barrier along here. You're gonna go into that and into these backyards, which are right up to Haber? No, you're probably gonna go into our properties if there's ever a need to expand Haber, which probably will happen, to happen. And then the presentation of Safety Town earlier, thank God for Safety Town, because these houses don't have much of a yard for kids to play in. They're gonna be playing in the streets. 10 feet in between houses, let's throw the football. There's not gonna be much space in the yards for these kids to play with. They're gonna be in the streets, and that's gonna create a danger for these children. And as an emergency physician who's seen many children who've been struck by vehicles, I don't want to see that across the street from where I live. Mr. Dorman said earlier that if any harms comes to our wells, it'd be a civil matter, as already been mentioned, so I guess you all are off the hook for that. But there's gonna be a lot of other infrastructure implications that are gonna come from this. So I thank you for your time, and I hope I don't have to see you all in the emergency department. I mean that in a good way.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Gay declines to speak unless she wants to speak. Keith Gay?
Keith Gay, our address is 10783 Haber. Since I didn't do very well at speech class in high school, I have written mine down, and I'm just gonna read it. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm vehemently opposed to the proposal to build Salem Springs across from us on Haber Road and Phillipsburg Union Road. I respectfully cite the following reasons, which many have already been mentioned. The density of the homes to be built is extremely high. This is tantamount to urban sprawl, which Mr. Airbaugh mentioned, which I detest. When we found our dream home on Haber Road in 1999, we knew this is where we'd raise our children, and it was a place we would stay until retirement and beyond, and that's where we're at right now. Room enough for our two kids to play and enjoy the land. Entertaining family and friends would be a blast. Besides, allowing this proposal is against the city's goal in Plan Clayton. We on Haber Road are not, in my estimation, neighbors, but fairly close friends. We are speaking tonight as one voice. We are all opposed. That being said, other friends and I are of the opinion that a significant density reduction would be acceptable, very dense, very high reduction. This would retain, retain the rural country setting already in place. Secondly, the areas on the west side of Haber are prone to flooding with significant rain event. I can't quote any factual amounts of rainfall, but based on my experiences, rain between two and a half and three and a half inches in a 36 to 48-hour period results in a true river going from the back of our property, through the yard, and through one of only two culverts, sending, sending the flow across Haber Road, of which we are one... Right here. Right in the middle. Did everybody see the video, or at least pictures, of our properties? You can't imagine the safety reduction there. We had to go out in the road and tell people to slow down because they were coming up on six inches of water in the road because our four-foot ditch is already full and couldn't handle through this one pipe or the second one at the Roberts' house. We realize that the flooding situation on our side of Haber has been there a while, but if this mound is built and it blocks further flow of rainwater away from us, our ranch home will be underwater. Some of the other basements, like the Roberts' near us, have flooded with over a foot of water. That would be even worse. Lastly, for this development to be accomplished to completion, it may necessitate blasting in the ground. We've talked about that. This concerns all, since we have wells supplied by a great aquifer. If any blasting is done, the quality and safety of our water is compromised. I am appealing to all of the board members here to vote no to this proposal as is. It is not in the best interest of my friends on Phillipsburg Union Road and Haber Roads, nor is it in the best interest of the city of Clayton. This board has the responsibility to act in the interest of its citizens, and that's what we're asking for today. I've, I've not heard any pro votes on this yet. Thanks again for the chance to talk. I appreciate it.
Mark Alsabrooks has declined to speak unless he...
I'm trying to get quick. You're all right. Mark Alsabrooks, I live at 220 Irongate Drive. So, where you see the blue circle up there, I'm on this side of that. So, we have lived in Union for a long time. I know I'm not in the Haber, and I said this at the last meeting, I envy you guys on Haber Road because you do have the five acres. That's what we wanted. You know, we couldn't do that, but we, we settled for what we have. We were, we first started off of Martindale Road, right down from Union Elementary on Hollycrest Lane, 409 Hollycrest Lane, and it was too tight there, and we said we want to go farther out, somewhere farther out. If one of those were available, maybe we would have taken them, but they were not. So we chose 220 Irongate Drive. And the reason we chose that is because of the rural area. Our backyard goes, you know, all we see is the field, and it's lovely. I know someone showed a sunrise. Well, we get to see the sunset. We can sit out on our patio, have a fire, see the sunset. It's beautiful. That's why we moved there. That's why we're there. And this, we won't see any of that. Our kids grew up in that area. They played with the kids in the area, and I know somebody brought that up about the kids. The kids in Union play on the streets. My car's been hit by the footballs, okay? The baseballs. They used to enjoy the three lots that were on Irongate Drive before the Arbor Homes built there. They built those three houses, so now they can't play there, so they're out in the street. That right there, you're gonna have kids all over there. So safety concerns all abound right there, okay? Not to mention the deer, the fox. We can see all that stuff. You're taking all that away if you, if you vote for this. So the flooding, all that stuff has already been mentioned, but I have a culvert right there, and I have a basement, a finished basement with egress windows. It's never flooded since we've been there, okay? This might be the first time when it happens. Those retention ponds, they're not gonna hold that. I just, I mean, I see the pond in Irongate Estates. We have a HOA that we are in charge of, but that fountain hardly ever works. Those fountain, that fountain right there, if someone else owns the HOA other than the neighborhood, even then, it might not work. Then algae's gonna build up, then it's gonna stink, then you're gonna have mosquitoes and all that stuff. The aerators are supposed to be there, where the long one is. That's where our house is. We have mosquitoes already. We're gonna have a ton more. Please, listen to all these folks here. Some of them say they want, they're okay with something being there. That's the only thing I disagree with. I don't want anything there. If I could have bought it for 600,000, I would have done it, believe me. Now that I think about it, all of our neighbors should have pulled and just bought it anyway. But anyway, we're at this point. But thank you guys so much. I know it's gonna be a long night, and thank you for listening to us, and please, please, I beg you, don't let this pass. Please, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. and Mrs. Spear?
This is William Spear. We live at 214 Irongate. So we're right here on the corner, where the blue circle is, on this side of Irongate. So we're, we're also in Union as well, but we piggyback on everything everyone has said. We, we have been here less than a year. So the cornfield, the empty land, the country is what drew us. So we were shocked when we got the letter. We had no idea it was up for sale. The sellers didn't say anything about it, of course, and we could have done our due diligence to see that it was up for sale, and we didn't. The, the, what I want to speak on is the retention ponds and the safety of it. I have a letter from the HOA from Irongate Estates. Can I read it? Okay.
You have five, you have five minutes.
Okay, it's, it's pretty short, and I read pretty fast. So she was telling me that we carry a liability policy on the pond in case of drownings. Kids are attracted to our pond to fish. Of course, accidents can happen. They are also attracted to the pond when, when it ices over. They don't realize how dangerous it is because it doesn't freeze enough to necessarily hold the child's weight. We have a company treat, we have a company that treats our pond to keep the algae at a minimum. They generally come out once a month to treat it. We also have the fountain pond to help circulate the water and keep it from going stagnant. The pond right now, because of the fountain being clogged, is quite stinky. I noticed it when she was up running, but I haven't found out if the company unclogged it or if it's finally unclogged on its own. So we're not, so we not only treat the pond, we also have to maintain the fountain, and that can be quite costly. Honestly, if I was you, I would go down to the pond, to the pond and sit on the bench, take in the smell for one, and then listen to the fountain. I'm not saying that the fountain is horrible when inside the houses, but it is all about what you want. During the hot, hot part of the summer, we have to have that fountain run for about 12 hours a day to keep the pond looking and smelling decent. I hope that this has helped you. Feel free to ask any questions. I know that this subdivision will definitely affect your street. So we're definitely opposed to this bill, and I just wanted to just bring out those safety points in the pond, since it's gonna be right in our backyard, literally.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. Kelly Clark?
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I'll be brief because I, am I near the end?
I think you're the last one.
Okay, all right. My name is Kelly Clark. My wife and I live at 4138 Phillipsburg Union Road, and I'd just like to say that I retired from one career and started another career as a school bus driver. Once I heard about this, I, a big thing, the, the main thing, the only thing with school bus driving is safety. I started thinking immediately of traffic up and down Haber Road, and I started thinking about, my wife's a school bus driver, started thinking about picking up students, both in Irongate and this new development, getting out on Haber, coming down to 40 and Haber. There's no traffic light there. It's already a mess to get out on. You've got school buses going to the right, you're going to the left in the morning and then the afternoon. You've got, believe me, you have no idea how crazy people drive till you drive a school bus, and you think about how much bigger we are than they are, and they're still ready to take us on. Now, I'm joking, but I'm telling you, this is, this is one of a bunch of different things. So I don't want to regrind all of this. I'm for the oppose, I'm opposing this, my wife and I, in the, in the way that it is right now, okay? Also, when we, when you all were talking about, when you all were talking, when we first started, about the financial situation and all that, my concern now is that under, because of the, the financial pressure, fiscal pressure that, that's gonna be here, that there could be a rush to judgment to say, hey, let's start allowing these developments to come in because we can, I'm not saying it's, it's quick, easy cash, I'm just saying it's one income stream that could be used to... I'm just saying it's one income stream that could be used to fund operations. I understand that that has to be done. I understand that. But when you look at all of the cases made by all of these residents here, okay, they're talking from their hearts, they're talking heart and soul, and they're very valid concerns. And it's nothing against your company, sir, but you stand up here and say, everything you say, oh, yeah, we can do that, we can do that, we can do that. This hasn't been done in this project, okay? Why are we looking to, why are we looking to rezone, okay, and do all this stuff before we even know the ramifications that's going on with all this? Why are we doing that? To me, I'm expecting my elected officials to do the due diligence to find out, to get a plan, to find out what the concerns are, what could happen, because every farm field around here is different. The water's different, the people are different. Everything is different. So why are we ready to let this company come in and rezone this, and we can never go back? We can never go back. So if they just say, oh, hey, you know what? We didn't get what we wanted, we're going to pull out. Go ahead and sue us, do what you want to do, okay? They could do that. That field is still zoned. Anything could go in there. Is that right to the people, the residents? That sets a tone for the rest of the people in Clayton. If that kind of stuff happens, okay, I don't know what to tell you. All credibility is going to be gone from now on out. I can't say anything clearer than that. I would appreciate if you all would figure out what the issues are, get them worked out, find the answers, let everybody know. We're not opposed, my wife and I are not opposed to a development. It's a fact of life. We're opposed if the way this is being done, and it seems to me like it's just being crammed through, okay? And you all might say, oh, we're not, but where are all the answers for the questions that people have had? Okay? Where are the answers? They're not out there, okay? So I'm just saying, I would appreciate that you make sure all the questions get answered. This is way too many homes. I have a concern with the entrance on Phillipsburg Union. How close is that to Irongate entrance and exit? How close is that to that four-way stop sign? Oh, my gosh. In the morning, in the afternoon, on the weekend? Has anyone studied how much traffic is coming in and out of all of these locations? Has anyone looked at that? I have a concern for stuff like that, okay? Anyway, thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. And we had two other people, the last two that were on the list that checked, no, if they want to come up and speak, of course they can. Megan Gahl, want to come up?
Yes, please.
All right, come on up.
My name is Megan Gahl. See the little bubble on Irongate? I live one house north of that. My comments today almost all have to do with safety. My daughter on Haber Road this last winter ran over your mailbox. That road is slick all the time. It is chip and seal pavement. I am a daughter of geologists and civil engineers. I know my asphalt. It's cheap pavement. It lasts for a while, but it degrades in water. The Bowman, Pam Bowman who just left, if you've ever been to the corner of her lot, we have to fill it up with rocks, or the City of Clayton fills it up with rocks, because so many cars are going off the corner of that road. It's eroded, it's falling in. That's where a culvert is that has all the water. I live in that little bubble, that little triangle right there, that's an empty lot right now. Right behind me in the, what used to be three empty lots, they just built three houses on slabs. The river that used to run through my backyard, one direction, north-south, now goes north-south and east-west. I have a lake in my yard. When the water is heavy, it runs out of the cornfield, through that triangle, and down my street. To say that it will not affect Union as well is a fallacy. One of the biggest things also I am looking at, again, where is your water coming from? Union. Where is your fire? Hi, guys. They're over here. They're not over there. Are you going to build a new station for 155 houses? Where are your police? A perfect example, the two other children that I have that drive. It is my understanding that the intersection of Hope Road and Westbrook Road is also City of Clayton. My daughters were involved in an accident, and the City of Clayton officials couldn't get there. Thank God for the Trapwood Police and the Brookville Squad. What does that say about this far north reach of your community? It's not covered. It's not safe. The resources are not in place. Sorry, dry mouth. If we wanted to do it right, like my husband, who is from a farming community, the water would have already been run. The city sewer and sanitation would have already been in place. If Clayton wants to grow in that direction, then they need to put the services in place before they do that, so that those wells don't have the opportunity to become contaminated. Again, kids playing in the road. Emergency services not available. We've already heard, very beginning of the meeting, the money runs out in just a couple It's not there. How are you going to support that? I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, ma'am. And the last person on here is Kristy Doherty.
I'm Kristy, and I'm at 145 Spring House, so I'm in Irongate, too. The flooding, I know it's not Clayton's deal, but when they do, it sends it all over to our neighborhood. That happened with us. Our yard now floods because they built all the houses, and it now all runs to us. I know he was saying that he talked to the city manager of Union. Well, they don't call us back, so our city hasn't done anything to help us, so I hope that doesn't happen to the Clayton people, because we haven't gotten any assistance with that. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is the schools. I assume all these kids are going to go to Union Elementary. Union Elementary is already using trailers. And they're going to close another school. They're talking about closing one of the schools and sending more kids to Union Elementary. The gentleman from Arbor Homes said these are going to be first-time home buyers. I'm assuming that means they're going to be younger, they're going to have younger kids. All those kids are going to have to go to Union Elementary. We already can't support the school there for Union Elementary. So I know I have a four-year-old. We are sending our kid to St. Chris. We're paying to send her there because the school system is failing. So I just wanted to bring that up before you build 155 houses with young kids that's going to need to go to school. We don't have the schools in place to support that right now.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And so that was everyone who signed in. Is there anyone who didn't sign in that wants to speak?
I'm Joan Hodgkinson. I live at 4489 Sweet Potato Ridge. Some of you may know me as the crazy lady with the dogs on the corner. My, everything that's been said, I understand. I'm not going to repeat any of it. Just a final word to you as council members. When I moved here 23 years ago from Colorado, people encouraged me to go to South Dayton, but my roots were in Phillipsburg and I wanted North Dayton. When I picked out the house where I live currently, a young man, to me was young, Rick Shower, lived across the street. So I talked to Rick. Rick has been gone several years, but I talked to Rick about the neighborhood and what it was like out here. That was the year 2000, so now some things that you said tonight make a lot of sense. He said to me, Joan, this is a wonderful area. He was so right. When I find on a cold winter morning that Mr. Anderson is out shoveling my driveway to help me out, and there have been other strange people out in my driveway many times helping me do things that I have no idea who they even are, but he said, you will love this area. He said, we just had something happen. I didn't pay much attention, but he said, we are a part of Clayton now. They've got our back. I ask you, please have our back.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. My name's Nathan Turbay. I live at 4516 Phillipsburg Union Road. Moved here about a year and a half ago, and I spent all my life in the city. One of the reasons I moved out here is because I did not want to be in something like this anymore. And like everybody else here, I'm not opposed to innovation, development. Problem is, like you said earlier, when I first walked in here, you didn't want an Austin landing sitting here. This is an Austin landing, except worse, because there's no green spaces, there's no fountains, there's nothing going on here, except houses on top of houses on top of houses. It's really ugly. No offense to you, I'm sure the houses are nice, but it's just packed in area. The other thing that concerns me is everybody's talked about the wells and everything else. And a statement he said is, we don't care what's west of Harbor Road. That's not our interest. When he was up here speaking. So whatever happens at, that's on them, those people. So if it's caused by them, it's on us. Yes, we have to have civil action, but that's still money. That's still what we have to go out and spend money on to fight that in court. To what? To get nowhere? I mean, I just want to say, I really, I'm really opposed to this, and I understand that innovation needs to go and development needs to grow up, but I would look at reducing the size of this. This is, I don't know, too packed. I lived in Haber for a while, and I saw them put in a development like this. And those houses are like five feet in between. One house after the other, after the other, after the other. No play areas, nothing. And I'm not going to keep going over what everybody else said, because it's been said 50 million times, but I hope you really take a look at this and maybe consider reducing the size of the lots, or not reducing, increasing the size of the lots and reducing how many people or how many lots are inside of here.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Mullinix. I live at 10680...
Could you just have...
I'm sorry.
...the people verify they have been sworn in, and if they haven't been sworn in, can you swear a man? Because we may be over people...
I didn't plan on talking, so I'll swear in.
Yeah. The other folks that were, I guess we can do it afterwards. Sorry. Okay. Raise your right hand. I swear to tell the truth.
I swear to tell the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
Nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Kevin Mullinix, I live at 10680 Putnam Road, directly behind Scott and Trudy Anderson, the Christmas tree farm. Scott was my dad's commander. I was a military brat, joined the military, came back here, bought my property to live out in the country by Scott and Trudy. It was mentioned that no one wants to buy lots that have two acres. I disagree with that. I feel like a lot of people would disagree with that. The profit isn't there for them. They don't want to build two-acre lots. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I echo that sentiment. I think I speak for the whole council. Everyone was very articulate, and we're happy you came. You know, it throws out a lot of questions for us, but I'm really, I mean, if no one came and no one cared, then it'd be pretty sad. So I also appreciate you, and I think I speak for the rest of our council, too.
I make a motion, we close the hearing.
Yeah, is there any proponents? No? Okay. Yeah, that's right. That's a good call. So Mr. Gorman has made the motion to close the public comments portion of the meeting. And Ms. Kelly, second, and so, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is that a roll? Okay. Okay, so the public comments section is closed. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I did that, didn't I?
Yeah. It's two things.
I move, we close the public hearing.
Again, Mr. Gorman, motions that we close the public hearing, and Ms. Kelly seconded that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. So again, I want to thank everyone for what you brought to the table today, and it definitely gives me a lot to think about, and I thank everyone else also. We're going to go on with our agenda, so no one leave, hang tight. We're going to go to the clerk's report.
You have before you the council meeting minutes of April 20th, 2023.
I'll move for approval. Second.
I abstain.
Motion to approve the minutes from last meeting as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman, with Mr. Henning abstaining. So have a roll call, please.
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
I abstain.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Abstain.
And Stevens?
Yes. So we had two abstentions, and we are unanimous accepting it after that. Old business, we have no old business. We have two orders of new business, and these will both be the first of two readings. Will you read the first ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-052307, an ordinance adopting amendment of Section 1313.08, placement of receptacles of Chapter 1313 of the Clayton Codified Ordinances.
I'll move for approval.
Motion to approve the first ordinance as written, second by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes.
Okay.
Let the record show that ordinance passed first reading. The second ordinance is the ordinance that we discussed tonight over the zoning and the new development. We heard a lot of, a lot of themes tonight, and I have to tell you, not one of them was new. It was just things that we've all talked about, that our staff has all talked about. I'm not diminishing what anyone said, but we knew these things would come up, and we, like I think it was Kelly, said, yeah, we don't have answers for everything, because some things you don't put, some things you don't answer until the project gets going. because some things you don't put, some things you don't answer until the project gets going. You know, you don't lay the water first. It just, it's just not the way the development happens. If we were cash-heavy, you know, hey, maybe we could go out and do that, but I don't know of any city that does, does it that way, not in today's environment. You know, we heard a lot about traffic, about water, you know, about the wells. Those are all concerns that we have about the street, about Phillipsburg Union, about Haber, about the, the intersection at 40. Again, those are things that have all been on our plates, about the ponds, about the safety of the traffic, the streets, you know, the kids in the streets, the ponds, and we, and the ditches and things like that. And also, we've talked a lot about the heritage. I'm from kind of that area. I grew up in a rural area in Hope, and I've seen, you know, in my years, I've seen a lot of changes, some of it very bittersweet for me. So again, we appreciate everyone bringing it in. We appreciate the insight that you bring to us here. We, I think it was said earlier, I'm not, I think you may have, may have mentioned this, you know, it's, we get in a tough spot sometimes because our decision-making has to be made on facts, and we have the whole city to think about. You know, yeah, we, we hear you folks, and believe me, anyone up here would walk through fire for any one of you. I know that because I know these people up here. They're very dedicated to our city. We have to think about the whole city. I get it, you know, that no one wants a housing development built in their backyard. I understand that fully. Again, I've actually lived that. So, so what I'm throwing out there to our council is that we have, in order to move forward, or not move forward on this, we have options here. We have the option to accept the proposal as written. We have the option to table it. We have the option to postpone the action until some other time, to postpone it until indefinite time. And I hope that we would at least refer to the proposal to a committee or special meeting of council, because there is some questions that I, actually, that I have also, and it gives us a chance to revisit the proposal, you know, if, if everyone else would feel like that would be an option there. So I'm leaving it up to our, you know, our council. These are smart people. They're dedicated people, and I'm, I'm confident that whatever we do tonight, we're going to make the right decision. And it may not, it may or may not make you happy. I don't know. We'll see how that goes. But trust me, trust me, we are, we're putting the, the, the well-being of our city first, and that's, you know, I just can't say it any plainer. That's, we have a lot to consider here, a lot of geography, a lot of economics, so.
Martina, how would, in my time here, have asked, never really seen anything quite like this. How, what would be the proper language, motion to table this?
The resolution first, the ordinance first.
I just want everybody to know that we have, you know, we do have options here, so.
So then Barb, won't we have Barb read the title of the ordinance?
It's ordinance O-0523-08, an ordinance adopting, rejecting, or modifying the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve with specified conditions the application of Clayton Properties Group, Inc., doing business as Arbor Homes, for a change in zoning from Rural Conservation District 2, RCD 2, to Plant Development District, PDD, and to further approve the preliminary development plan for 42.99 acres of property located along Phillipsburg Union Road and Haber Road, bearing parcel ID number M60030060009, to be called Salem Springs within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
I move that we reject this ordinance.
Do you mean reject the Planning Commission's recommendation?
I would adopt it.
You said reject the ordinance. I think you were specific, to be just a little more specific, reject the Planning Commission's-
Oh, eight?
Correct.
Okay, that's what-
But I want to make sure your motion is clear. You want to reject the recommendation of the Planning Commission for approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I wanted, I do not want to approve the Planning Commission's, right.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion to reject the Planning Commission's.
I, I'm gonna, Brandon, I, I'm with you on this. I'd like to move to table this, which I think takes precedence over, over what you just, over your motion. I'm just, I'm just moving to table. I, I think there's some, I think there's some questions that need answered, and so I'm moving to table at this stage.
You have a motion, but according to the rules, there are specific motions that can be voted on before yours, and one of them is a motion to table.
I will second Dennis's motion to, Dennis's motion to, to table this.
Then you need four votes to approve the motion to table.
Okay, so you heard what Martina said. We'll start with Brendan, or roll, or roll call vote.
Brendan?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Bachman.
Okay. Saying yes is yes to table.
If you vote yes, you're voting yes to table it.
Okay. Yes.
Henning?
No.
Gorman?
No.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens.
Folks, you know, there's just a lot that needs to be answered, so I, I think we're trying to do our due diligence here. So again, it doesn't take back anything I said before.
So can we have a timeframe for the tabling, since we have the residents here?
If council wants, we can schedule a work session for the May 8th meeting. We can schedule it at 6:30.
Is it, I mean, my preference would almost be of us, you know, discussing, you know, with the developer here as well. Yeah, whether that be that specific work session or not, but I, I think that would be, because, you know, with everything that was, that was brought up tonight, obviously, there's record of it, a lot of questions, and, you know, I think that would be best, whether it's the next meeting or, or one after, even if it takes a couple meetings here to go through the process. You know, we, we want to get this right. And if it, if it, if it takes a couple meetings, it takes a couple meetings. But I think doing something at least with the developer, with us, whether it's just us, obviously still open to the public, but then also, you know, further input as well. But I think, you know, we've heard a lot tonight, and I think something along that format, you know, would, would cover all the bases.
What further input are we looking for, Dennis, or Brandon? I mean, we have a report on the geology of the whole thing.
Answering all these questions. Yeah, I mean, Tim, all due respect, I heard a lot of things tonight that I hadn't heard before. Concerns about density-
So we're going to check every statement that was made?
Let me finish. Concerns about density, concerns about water, concerns that I know the way the system is, that some of these things can't be answered right away. Some would take studies, and the only way you get that study is to approve it. And, and I don't know that we want to do that yet. So I, I'm, like Brandon, I'd like to talk to the developer and try to find out whether there are answers to some of these questions that the residents have that can make it more attractive to everybody involved. Because what I heard was a lot of people saying, we're not opposed to development, we just don't want exactly what that is today. And so that's, that's why I'm doing it, you know?
I have to say, I'm not opposed to development up there. I've talked to people about this that are pro it and for it, but taking what they've said into consideration. I mean, I would agree that the lot sizes have to be increased. I think that's important for the developer to take back to the office, and then let us know if it's something they can even consider.
But I mean, we, we have to, we have too much at stake in this city not to do this right, and that's why I don't want to rush to judgment tonight.
Well, I think when we became a city, we knew what was at stake, and, and we did it right by saying, we want to keep the rural area rural area. And now you're going three miles into the rural area with $555, or 155 homes.
Tim, I understand your position. You made it clear. That, that still doesn't respond to a lot of the things that I heard tonight. And I, I mean, you know, change is tough. It is difficult. If it happens, we need to make sure it happens the right way. I agree with that, but I also agree that we have to take into consideration what the city of Clayton is going to be 10 years from now, and it's our obligation to make sure it's still here. And so I just want to do this right. That's all I'm saying.
I don't think that this has anything to do with what we talked about for the first half hour of the meeting. It should not have anything to do with the economic status of the city. Develop the whole north end of the city just because we need some extra money. There's other ways of doing that, Dennis.
Okay. Tim, I'm not here to grandstand with you. What I'm here to tell you is that nobody is talking about developing the whole north side of the city. What we're doing is doing this by what we're presented. Now, Tim, what we're, what we're presented with, we don't own this property. It's the people that own the property that are selling the property. This isn't perfect. If I had my way, if I could develop the city of Clayton based upon property I owned, it would be different. Nothing's perfect. All I want to do is make sure we're doing this right. I don't want to do it by emotion. I don't want to do it by grandstanding. I just want to do it right, and that's why I made the motion.
Okay, that motion's been settled. So let's move on to the next ordinance, which is, this is actually going to be an emergency ordinance here.
Ordinance O-0523-09, an ordinance facilitating the financing of public infrastructure improvements for the benefit of a project being undertaken by Hunter's Path Project 1, LLC, by authorizing the execution of a cooperative agreement and various related agreements, and declaring an emergency.
I'll move for the emergency.
Mr. Coons?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So this particular piece of legislation has to do with Hunter's Path. As you remember, we did pass a TIF ordinance for that particular property for public infrastructure to be installed there. As part of that project, DDC has reached an agreement with the Port Authority to sell bonds for DDC in order to be reimbursed for the public infrastructure improvements. All this agreement is, is that it's allowing us to pay the Port Authority for, for the, those bonds, for, for the debt payments. Those funds are only to be used from the TIF account. This puts the city under no financial obligation at all outside of those TIF accounts. If the funds are not in the TIF accounts, we are under no liability or obligation to pay additional city funds. So really, this is just us acting as a middleman for those funds to be used, to be, to pay off the debt, the debt service payments to the Port Authority.
I'll move for emergency.
Second.
Motion to approve the emergency by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Mr. Bachman?
Abstain.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens.
Yes.
Move to approve the ordinance as written.
Second.
Motion to approve the emergency ordinance as written by Mr. Merkel, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Roll call, please.
Bachman?
Abstain.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens.
Yes.
Move to approve the ordinance as written.
Second.
Motion to approve the emergency ordinance as written by Mr. Merkel, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Roll call, please.
Bachman?
Abstain.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens.
Yes.
Move to approve the ordinance as written.
Second.
Motion to approve the emergency ordinance as written by Mr. Merkel, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Roll call, please.
Bachman?
Abstain.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens.
Yes.
Move to approve the ordinance as written.
Second.
Motion to approve the emergency by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that was unanimous also. And we'll move to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm not going to address everything in the city manager's report, because I'd like to be home before midnight tonight. Just a couple items for you. We do have Sweet Clayton Clean coming up on Saturday, May 20th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. over on Woolery Lane. It is until the bins are filled up. So I would get there early if there are items that you want to drop off. And just as a note, city offices are closed on Monday, May 29th, in observance of Memorial Day. We do have the ward study update, and you were all given that information again last week with the street names that are going to be changed, or not changed, but that would be moved from one ward to another. Council does need to take action on that item by July 24, or by July 1st, and that has to be by ordinance.
You did say we didn't have to approve that. We can keep the wards as they are?
Correct. You, you can.
So can you add to the agenda, word it that way? Thank you.
We just have to believe.
It just has to be voted on, has to be passed by ordinance.
Yeah, and I actually think we need to discuss it, too, because to me, I, I don't think there's necessarily a need to do it, but I do want us, for us to stay current.
I would agree, but with some developments we have going on, I think they need to be changed in the future, once these are done. So keeping them the same for the next six years, I don't see as a problem.
We'll say it's every 10 years, but if these developments do finish out prior to that, and council feels the need to make those changes prior to those 10 years, you're, you're able to do that.
I just don't want to get lopsided, you know, real lopsided, because, I mean, it looks like the numbers now, they're not that bad. They're not that far off. They're 200 and some off, so it's not huge. But again, I don't want us to get, I just don't want us to get lopsided, so.
Here's, so an item, just to bring it up, because I told the person that I would follow up with him on the Friday after the council meeting, we had a request for a voluntary annexation into the city of Clayton. It's the property that we talked about the last time, over off, or behind Candlelight, off of Taylorsburg. This person is asking to be annexed into the city because they want to develop it into a single-family residential, and the city of Clayton didn't want them connecting into Elru because it would then become a pass-through to, basically to Main Street. So I am looking for some guidance from council, if you want me to tell this person that the city is not interested in that, or if there's something that you would like to schedule to speak with them.
I have no opposition.
Have they, oops, do they have permission to have Englewood water?
There's county-
I mean, that would be the first consideration, I would think.
There's county water and sewer there.
Huh?
There's county water and sewer there.
There's, well, I mean, Cedar Knolls is Englewood water.
There is county water and sewer there. We've looked it up. We've researched it. At this time, there is county sewer and water. I don't know what it was 30 years ago when some of those places were put in, but there is county sewer and water now on Elru.
Oh, Cedar Knolls, I thought, had, had Englewood water.
They may have Englewood water, but there is county sewer and water available.
Well, I, I think you'll have an awful lot of traffic going through there. I mean, the only way, if you, he agreed to put a cul-de-sac at the end of the street that comes off of Westbrook, or off of Taywood, I mean, that would stop. But you can't, you make it a through street, and, because we had the same problem at Savina with Gorman. We're going to bring Gorman through- Oh, Cedar Knolls, I thought, had Inglewood water.
They may have Inglewood water, but there is county sewer and water available.
Well, I think you'll have an awful lot of traffic going through there. I mean, the only way, if you agreed to put a cul-de-sac at the end of the street that comes off of Westbrook or off of Taywood, I mean, that would stop. But you can't, you make it a through street, and, because we had the same problem at Savina with Gorman, we're going to bring Gorman through, and the engineer said, "You do not want to do that, absolutely not," because it'll be a raceway down to the, well, Myers wasn't there at that time, but it is today, and...
Tim, are we getting a little ahead of ourselves? We're getting a little ahead of ourselves on, I mean, right now, the only question is whether we want to entertain his question of whether he can become part of Clayton. I mean, we're not...
Well, he wants to become part of Clayton to develop that land.
Yeah, but we haven't approved...
I mean, Randy Milot, and that's why I almost did it 20 years ago, and he got in trouble with Inglewood.
But we haven't approved, there's no development plans in front of us. I mean, right now, it's just a question of, you know, do we say, "Yeah, come in front of us," and we'll...
A man who doesn't say the, "For development of single-family houses," that's what you just read, wasn't it?
Not, yes, that is his intention, is to develop it as a single-family residential development. But the city does not have any plans, there is nothing that he has submitted to us. He just posed the question whether or not the city of Clayton would be willing to do a voluntary annexation to have that parcel, which is currently located in Inglewood, brought into the city of Clayton.
I still don't think we want to take that chance, and if we don't block that street off now, all we have to do is run one street, and they go right out the front door, or right out Elru, I mean.
We're just talking about one resident.
No, no, it's one property owner, yeah, it's one property owner, and he wants to, yeah.
Well, I mean, we would have to approve any through street.
Yes. All I'm, all the person is asking is if Clayton would be willing to entertain them becoming a part of the city of Clayton.
Yeah, I mean, why would we not entertain that?
Well, it would have to be, it would be a process that this person would initiate. There is a section of ORC that would allow him to initiate that process. I still think Inglewood would have to release them, but...
Yeah, I think so. I'd have to double check, but that's off the top of my head.
Oh, he's absolutely aware. I've let him know that.
How are we going to prevent that? The street there, you have to continue the street.
We say no.
What exactly is the question?
If we just say this guy's going to annex, or annex his property to Clayton?
Okay.
And there's a street that runs through his property line, and he continues, then he's got to use that street name, right?
I mean, yeah, I would suppose so. I mean, that's...
I suppose so, too, and that's just going to make a straight through.
We would have to approve that through street.
Well, there's two streets there, and I think we're really getting into the weeds on the specific, I mean...
Well, no, this is the same property that he requested the city allow him to connect to Elru, requested the city of Clayton allow him to do that. And the city of Clayton denied that because we didn't want then Inglewood residents using it as a through street. And that's when he came back and asked if he became part of the city of Clayton, and they were Clayton residents using that road, paying taxes to the city of Clayton for that infrastructure, would Clayton consider annexation?
Because I told you at the last meeting how Inglewood got control of that ground. And they're not going to give somebody else water that they wouldn't give us, but if Jack says county water's there, then that's one thing.
Tim, you may be absolutely right, and at the end of the day, that, and at the end of the day, that may all happen. I don't want to have to file a motion to continue my 9:30 hearing in the morning, so all I'm suggesting is that if the guy wants to talk to us, let's listen to what he has to say.
So I think, I think we do that, yeah. We do that.
One less, or well, two more heavy items, and I apologize. If you'll recall, the city appropriated ARPA monies for the Talmadge Road sewer project, or not sewer, storm water project. This project is mostly on private property, but it affects Talmadge Road as well. The cost estimates were done in 2020 when the Montgomery County Soil and Water did the cost estimates. It came up to $260,589.82. So it is going to be over what the city has dedicated to this project, which means there is going to be a cost burden to the residents there. It'll be dispersed across the residents that it affects, and it'll be in that watershed. So typically, they do not move forward with the project unless there's at least 50% of the residents in that area, within that watershed, who are in favor of the project. They feel that this project is important enough that with city council's support and with the money that the city is willing to put forward, they are willing to move forward with that project, continuing to have conversations with those residents about this project and the importance of this project. So they've reached out to me and asked if there was city council's support. I can tell you, there is staff-level support for this project, but I need to know if there is city council support for this project.
How much of a burden?
Um, the estimate, I think they're looking at, across all of the residents, there will be $83,788.07 divided among everyone. So they'll only pay a portion of that.
How many is everybody, like 20?
Do you know off the top of your head, Randy, how many in the actual watershed?
No, we said 70, 80, 90, 100, I have no idea.
Yeah. Yes.
I mean, if it's that many people, yeah.
Okay. And soil and...
Can it be assessed to their taxes?
It would be assessed, unless they want to pay it, but yes, it would be assessed to taxes.
Like a five-year plan if they need it?
I think it's 10.
10, okay.
I think it is the case, yeah. Okay, so I will pass that along to soil and water.
And we need, and we need how many, 50% to say yes?
So, yes, so the sewer, or the soil and water, I'm sorry, my brain is sleepy. The soil and water is willing to move forward with the project without council consent. It'll be just, it's their project if there's 50% of the residents in that watershed who want the project. There's no guarantee that there's going to be 50% of the residents in that watershed who are going to want that project. So they were asking if city council had support for this project. I mean, you already do because you've already dedicated $152,000 to this project through ARPA funds.
Okay.
Didn't we just hear tonight a lot about another area of the city that has a water problem, too, that we refused to take care of years ago?
Mr. Gorman, if you would like to dedicate that money, you let me know which fund it's coming from, and we will do that.
I'm just saying that we're doing Talmadge, but we didn't do, and I never heard of this one before tonight, to be honest with you, but... Now, if you tell me what you did 25 years ago, will you, Dennis?
Okay, I think you have support, yeah.
One last item for you this evening. So if you'll recall, in 2020, the city discussed the allocation of ARPA monies for, and one of the projects designated was the Meadowbrook roof and skylight replacement. At the time, the quote for the project was $116,000 and some change. And on May 27th, we opened bids for that project, and we received two bids, and they came in respectively at $262,113 and $283,000. And we do have roughly $31,000 left in the capital budget. So if we were to move forward with this project, city council would have to appropriate additional monies for this project. And this is one of those issues, Meadowbrook is such a hot topic. I wanted to make sure that council knew what was going on and what we had before us. And I think Elaine is here, and she can talk to you about the leaking of the skylights and the need for the roof to be replaced.
The what? Oh, that's okay. So this is the flat roof area where the skylights are, and the project was to replace the skylights, the flat roof, and the siding all at once. We looked to see if this project could be spaced out between the three things, but unfortunately, it's going to create more issues if we try to do that because everything is interconnected.
Do we have to keep the skylights? Can they just roof it?
That was a question that I had as well. It severely limits the light because the skylights do provide most of the light for that area.
We would have to, we'd then have to...
You can add can lights, it'd probably save a lot of money, though.
Where's the area again? Where is it exactly located?
So we have three skylights. One is on the banquet side, as you come in to the lobby area before you get into the banquet room. Another one is in the other lobby area that's closer to the snack bar and as you get to the Laveras room by this, over the stairs. And then the last one is in the old, what would be the trophy room on the other side of the fireplace room. We looked at possibly nixing the one that's the fireplace room because we're not having as many issues with it, but it's, again, a drop in the hat. I mean, because it's the roof and the skylights together, that, that's not where a large cost is.
What's the difference between doing the roof and doing the roof with the skylights?
So I don't have that in front of me, but if we do that, more than likely, it's going to create more leaks because the way that the flat roof wraps around the skylights and under the siding, and the siding wraps around the skylights. So if you pull one out, you're messing with the others.
There's never been a skylight that didn't leak.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, but these were from 1988, so we're having, like the last time, it greatly affected the North Mountain Education Foundation where basically we had buckets that we were having to toss out every hour because of the amount of rain that was coming in. And we're constantly trying to, you know, patch that up a little bit. And right now, some of the siding, we are tarp'd up, so basically, it's a matter of time before that, the tarps come down, and we have more issues. So I know it's not, yeah.
The money savings, if you eliminate the skylights entirely and just...
We can certainly look into seeing what we could do as far as if we just made that part of the roof instead of adding the skylights, but then we would have to have lighting with that.
Yeah, there'd have to be a savings for not adding the skylights.
I'll buy you some LED lights.
Can lights are, yeah, not that, I mean...
Sure, and I don't doubt that, but again, we also have, again, I'm more than happy to take a look into that to see what, but we're building a roof then, so we're talking, you know, I mean, again, building a new roof, which, again, we can certainly, I'm definitely not opposed to looking to see if that, there's a cost savings there.
I'd say explore that.
Sure.
And we'll kind of go on the track of the Plan A, but look at Plan B and see if it was...
So we have 30 days to accept or accept a bid or reject it, so I can, I mean, probably the timeframe, we will go ahead and reject those bids, and we'll look into that, and then I'll come back to you.
Might be cheaper, right? Down the road?
Who knows? I mean, again, it didn't work for us last time.
I'm pretty sure it won't be.
Three years ago, it was over double, so I'll keep my fingers crossed, though.
Me, too.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions or comments for a city manager?
The only thing I'll add real quick, I don't know, Elaine, if you're sticking to the end, on Monday night, I did help the Board of Elections set up Meadowbrook as a polling location. Thank you and Amanda for that. But I really want to say, the staff member, I forget her name, who was there with us until like almost 11:00 p.m. setting it up, she was so helpful. I had never met her before, so please relay to Amanda our appreciation towards her and how helpful she was. It was phenomenal.
Her name is Jenna, and that's the position you did add this year, so thank you so much. We do appreciate that.
She was, Jenna did a great job, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is that it for the city manager? Okay, so we're gonna, we do have a section for visitors' comments, if anybody has anything. Yeah, that's all right. We'll let you speak on two different topics, that's okay.
Thank you. One is, I'm trying to get some information on the JED. Who is, who manages the JED? You are on the JED, because I go on to Clay Township's website and also Clayton's, and I really don't see any updated information as to what's going on.
To answer your question, Clay Township does the zoning on the JED. Those two truck places you're worried about, you would have to go to Clay Township to get them paved.
Okay, well, even though, okay, it's in the JED, so I'm curious... Yeah, I know. Thanks, Jim. So there's a lot of stuff going on out there right now, and it's kind of questionable, I think so, for a joint economic development district, okay, that Clayton entered into with Clay Township to have nice, reasonable development going on. You know, right now, there is a residence, residential house, it's a 7396 Pleasant Plain that now has a truck stop behind it. They just dumped a bunch of gravel. There's a porta john sitting there, and at any given time, there can be anywheres from one to 15 semi trucks.
What was that address? I'm sorry.
Please? 7396 Pleasant Plain. It's right, it's right behind a residence and right behind the garage door place. So I kind of question that. I can't believe that the JED is allowing something like that to go in, so. So I would have to go to a Clay Township meeting, or is there a JED, I mean, JED manages...
Our JED only meets quarterly, so I would say your best bet quicker would be to go to a Clay Township meeting.
Okay.
I'm not trying to, you know, move the responsibility, but I'm saying that would be the best...
I'm just trying to find where to start.
Yeah, that'd be your best bet.
Because, you know, it's a lot easier to stop, stop it ahead of time before it gets in there, right? And it's already there, like overnight. The other one, too, is on Jack's Lane, you know, Inglewood Towing has moved in there on the corner of Diamond Mill and Jack's Lane, and they have a really nice facility, but across the street, there's a junkyard there now, and I'm pretty sure there's no zoning for junkyards within the JED.
Yeah, I think you probably, same answer, basically. I'd say go to the Clay Township and start there. And you can, I wrote down the address of this other one and the, and the truck stop, Inglewood Towing. I'll see what I can do from my side also.
So does the JED committee, do they meet? I mean, do they have a quorum?
Yeah. We meet, we meet quarterly. Actually, Clerk Sim and I are on the JED together, so I don't know, I'm not sure when our next meeting is. Okay, there you go, July 14th.
Okay, thank you. The other thing then, too, I live at 209 Kimmel, and I have four neighbors that are in Clayton, but we're kind of forgotten at times. So it's 209, 212, 261, and 268. So there, it's a very short strip of road, and we're forgotten all the time. Since the merger, we've yet to have that strip of our road paved. Now, though, I think, I think it's planned right now that Kimmel is going to be paved between Salem Street and Diamond Mill, maybe? Is that on the, is that on the planning or something?
No, just Salem Street only.
Just Salem Street? Okay, well, we're always forgotten. I was just wondering if you could put that on...
Kimmel's on for 2026.
2026. And you'll go all the way down past Diamond Mill?
Even your little section.
Okay, because, like I said, we're always forgotten, and Clay Township, they stop right there.
That section, that short section is in bad shape.
Yeah, yeah, it's really bad shape. Okay. 2026, that's good here. Okay. And then, let's see. Oh, I just wanted to say, I love the improvements now at Clayton Park. Really nice job, and I was sitting back, this guy back here? Is the park director, I mean, works for the parks or whatever, so, yeah, really nice job, and I like the little sign that the CTC's working on down there as well, so. Well, that's what I came for tonight.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And we, like I said, I'll... And we, like I said, I'll kind of follow up on those other questions, but I think your best bet, the quickest thing would probably be, yeah, go to the Clay Township, they give you the best answer, so. Okay, anybody else?
I know public comments for you, official calls, yeah, but I would like to at least propose one question for your investigation on the table thing that I forgot, in my excitement, I forgot to mention. When we were rejected for water at that plan, we did approach the City of Union about bringing, extending that water out to us, but their condition was, we had to be annexed into the City of Union. When I spoke to the city manager about this project today, he said, yes, I am aware of it, and as part of our condition, that property will need to be annexed to Union. I would like, I think council needs to investigate that, what Union's position's going to be on tapping into their water and sewer and storm drain, if they're going to fight this and plan to annex that property. So I think that's a question you need to do in your research, and I forgot to mention that in my public comment, so thank you.
We have a utility sharing agreement with the City of Union that the city of Clayton entered into several years ago, that requires them, and that district, all the properties in that area are part of that district, and actually, it was, that utility sharing equipment agreement was created in order to spur development in that north of 40, that's the language of the legislation.
He didn't mention that when I spoke to him today, so thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, last call. Okay, we're going to move to comments by-
Last call.
Comments by council, we'll start with Mr. Lieberman.
I'm really not going to say anything other than, I did hear a lot of really good stuff tonight, and it was done very respectfully, and, and it raised a lot of really good questions, and it's things I want to look into. And so I thank you all for those comments, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
Same thing, thank you for the residents, you had an overwhelming attendance tonight, that means you care, and I just think it's something that either you're going to agree or not agree, but thank you all for coming, meant a lot.
Mr. Merkel?
I'll, to, you know, basically add essentially what they've already said. We have to look at long-term solutions, you know, none of this is going to be done on basically just because, you know, we're talking about finances, that's, that's not our game, you know, we're not playing a game here. I mean, all these things are basically based on what's in the best interest of the city, and making sure whatever's done is in the best interest of everybody, including those people who live across the street from us. So, we will do our best as far as moving forward, and everyone have a wonderful tomorrow, and it'll be soon.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
I have nothing to say except for happy Cinco de Mayo and happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there.
Yeah, we can go to, the only thing, I just have two things. First off, thank you to everyone who sent us nice messages when my second son was born on April 19th at 1:00 AM. I have not slept since, and I'm sure Natalie is ready for me to get home. Baby Henry is doing well with his older brother Clayton, so we are a happy family of four now. And I did want to thank the residents for coming out tonight, we appreciate that. Our goal as council is to have you be proud of your city, so you continue to support our staff, police, and fire. So everything that you say that goes into my head in regards to the direction of the city is, how will you continue to support our staff, police, and fire in the future? Because I know, like, some of you said it tonight, you always have respected them and supported them, and we want you to continue to do that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bachmann?
Evening, everyone. You know, I know a lot was said and discussed tonight, you know, over a four-hour meeting, I think it was either our last one or one before that, you know, lasted maybe 15 minutes, whether it's 15 minutes or four hours, you know, we gotta get, it's our damn job to be here and listen to it. I'm not saying regularly go to midnight, but, you know, if, if every, if every meeting needs to have a work session before it, I know there's times you say, well, I don't want to do a bunch of work sessions, well, if you got important stuff to do it, again, excuse my language, it's our damn job. Same with here, you know, four-hour meeting, but everyone was heard, you know, a lot of new things came up. I believe the action taken tonight was, was the right one at this moment. I know people probably would disagree with that, probably just want to reject it off, right off the bat, but I think moving, you know, moving forward, you know, we, this just needs some further discussion and further exploring with some things, but we'll see what happens, but that's all I have.
Well, I kind of echo everything else, I don't want to rehash everything, I want to thank all the residents that came out, took the time to, they prepared, and were very articulate about their thoughts and what they, what they wanted, and we do appreciate You know, I think it's important, you know, that the folks, the folks that are still here, many of you left, but, you know, I mean, you have the players here, you have our police chief, our fire chief, our development folks, our services, our city manager, our law director, and these folks up here. And so, they all heard the same thing I heard, and all of those concerns that we wrote down there, all those themes, like I said, none of them are really new, but it gives us a chance to look at an additional perspective from you folks, and make the right decision for the city. I want to emphasize that. Again, I'd walk through fire for any of you, but we, our job, we're elected to move this city forward, and it doesn't mean blindly, I mean, well, we won't do that, we don't want to become another Austin Landing, we do not want to become, I shouldn't say this out loud, well, I won't even say, another city, another city nearby. We don't want to be, we don't want to be just nothing but traffic, okay? None of us up here want that, but we have to grow, just like I said at the beginning, if we're not growing, we're dying. You cannot stay stagnant, because time marches on, and you just heard what Elaine said about the skylights and the roof, you know, you wait six months, it's another 100 grand. Can you imagine waiting two or three years to say, we're not, you know, we're not building anything, we're not developing? Is it the right place? Who knows? If I had the absolute answer to that, folks, I wouldn't be sitting here, I'd be, you know, sitting in a mansion somewhere. We're going to do the best we can with the knowledge that we can, that we have, so. Yeah, yes, yeah, and we'll, we'll publicize that. Again, it's things that we encourage, we, every meeting, we encourage people to come to the meetings, you know, not just when it's in your backyard, you know, because then you get a better perspective on, I think, what we do. We're not adversaries here, we all live here, too. We're all lifers here, too. So, you know, I mean, again, we're not the adversaries, we're trying to move our city forward that you folks live in and we live in also. And it's not going to please everyone. Like I said, when, when my house got torn down on Hope Road to build the Goodwill, okay, that's pretty bittersweet, I lived there, you know, 23 years of my life, and the last thing I wanted to see was, you know, just bulldozed and torn down, but I had to step back, not only as the mayor, but also as a resident, and say, is that the better for the city? And you know what, I can sit here with a clean conscience and say, yes, it was. And now, whether this will be better for the city, I mean, I can't say right now, I'm not really prepared to say right now. I didn't come in here predisposed to this. I thought I would probably like it. I'm glad Mr. Lieberman had the forethought to, to, you know, move it, move it down to table, move it on down, so we can further discuss it, because I think it deserves that, and I think you guys deserve that, too. Again, we're not the adversaries, you know, we're your neighbors, and we're trying to represent you and the other 13,400 people in the city, so.
I move for adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Gorman's ready to go.
He's ready to grab.
All right. All, Mr., let's see, Mr. Gorman made the motion to adjourn, Mr. Merkel seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.